Okay, I make a motion to open the meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call. Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Lightkid?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Lanfear, aye.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, before we begin tonight, you know, I think everybody's aware of the just the tremendous devastation that hit five states, the tornadoes, and I would just like us to just take a moment of silence to just remember the victims and their families during this time. Okay, thank you. I'll begin with the board member conflict of interest disclosure. Does any board member have a disclosure this evening regarding any relevant information or contact pertaining to any of the items on the agenda?
I do not.
I do not.
Lanfear, I do not.
Okay, I do not. Does any board member have a conflict of interest regarding any of the items on the agenda? And that is having a particular financial interest in the outcome of a vote on an item before you?
I do not.
I do not?
Lanfear, I do not.
I do not.
I do not. Okay, will the clerk please read the open meeting compliance certification?
Okay. All right, guidelines for public comment. The public will have opportunities to comment on specific agenda items when they occur in the meeting and also in general matters at the end of the meeting. Speakers can comment once in each comment window if it is on the specific agenda item. If it is not, it is not a debate, a deposition, or a panel discussion. Speakers must, here I go again, I want everybody to step to the front of the room and they have. So, let's see here. If an attendee is participating via web conference technology such as Zoom, the clerk will announce how a attendee should signal if they wish to comment. This may differ by platform, but is typically accomplished through the raise the hand feature. We are using Zoom. I do request that you raise your hand. I do not follow the chat conversations. If you have something to post to my attention, please put it in the Q and A. Speakers must give their name, address, and organization. There shall be an exemption for any category of people protected by New York state law. Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officers. Officer, because speakers must limit their remarks to three minutes on any given topic. Speakers may not yield any remaining time they may have to another speaker. Board members may, with the permission of the mayor, only interrupt a speaker during their remarks for the purpose of clarification or information. Speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties or their representatives may address the board by written communications to village clerk@villageofpittsburgh.com. All written communications will become part of the public record and will be attached to the minutes at the, for that meeting. At the center's request, written communications will be read aloud by the clerk at the meeting and will adhere to the three-minute time limit. If printed materials, materials or other media are provided by attendees during the meeting, they must be submitted to the village board with the optional distribution to audience members. All materials will be part of the public record. Private distribution of materials to the audience members only is prohibited. And you're off.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll start with department reports. The building inspector's report. Does anybody have any questions for Steve regarding the report he submitted? You've been busy. No, all good? Steve, is there anything you'd like to add or?
Yes. Yep, Lily had pointed out, I missed something in regards to a salon on 18 South Main Street. I did go, I have tried to reach out to the owner for a bit, and I found out today that she had her baby. And that's why I have not been able to get a hold of them. So, I will get a hold of that and rectify the situation for the special permit. And I think that unless Jeff and I have been talking and we had an incident with a roof that was done by a contractor without a permit in a village. They put a metal roof on. So, I'm talking to Jeff today, and I think what I'm going to do, unless anybody has any objection, I'm going to issue a appearance ticket to the contractor for not obtaining a permit and not getting a certificate of appropriateness in order to try and protect the homeowner. She's very upset. She basically got taken by a contractor who said they, you know, they didn't need a permit. They put a metal roof on her house. And it's just a very bad situation, you know?
Okay, so you're handling, you're handling that with Jeff.
Yes, yeah, but I want to keep the board informed. You know, obviously, but I just want the rest of the board to know. Jeff said it might be a good idea just to let the board know.
Sure.
Pass us.
Sure.
Other than that, everything's good.
Okay.
Oh wait, got home and the dog was sick in all sorts of places too, so.
You had a day.
Wonderful afternoon.
Oh boy. Well, sorry about that, but thanks for showing up for the meeting.
What are you gonna do?
Well, yeah, exactly. Oh my goodness.
But that's coffee.
It's just coffee, okay. Zach, thanks for showing up. Oh yeah, oh wait, Dorothea?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have public comment for the building inspector's report from Peggy Carabera. She has several different comments for different sections, so I'll address those at each section. In the building inspector report, apparently my words aren't working tonight, so please excuse me. I haven't been drinking, I just can't speak.
Dorothea's doing three board meetings in a row. She did one last night, now ours tonight, and another tomorrow night. She is doing essentially 14-hour days to 15-hour days, so.
Yep, but still just can't speak, Claire, and I'm not including the dog part in the minutes, just for the record. Her first comment is on the New York State stretch energy code. What are the implications for the village as an historic district? Other questions later regarding a resolution. What are the landmark seminars that the building inspector attended? And regarding FIO request, does a building inspector prepare and respond to FIO? Please clarify, and what business is going into 18 South Main Street where the sign has been requested? Store, restaurant, salon, other? You answered that inadvertently, so, but the others I leave open.
The solar is covered in a later agenda item.
Yeah, we can get into more detail on that later, sure.
Yeah, the energy code, the energy code will basically not affect historical properties. It will, it will affect any new construction. The requirements are a little more stringent, which allows our community to become an energy smart community and, and may allow us to get grant monies to help us further energy conservation in the village. That's one of the items, one of the 10 items that they ask for, for community to accomplish in order to become part of a energy smart community.
Could I, could I just add very briefly to that too? Our board, was the last meeting we voted on that or the meeting before to become?
The meeting before, I think.
Yeah, I think it was, yeah.
Our regular meeting.
Yep, and as far as the landmark, I mean, it's, there were all sorts of different seminars and discussions on different things in that landmark society to pick out one. I mean, it was a lot about diversity and equality in historic preservation.
Yeah, so it was their most recent conference, yeah. Oh, the landmark.
And a foil, was there a question on the foil?
No, FIO.
That's what she meant.
Oh, she meant.
Freedom of information.
Okay, I was wondering, I'm like, I've never heard this term then.
Okay.
Yeah, there were two foil requests that have been accomplished and the material sent to the requesters as per the law.
I'll actually jump in. Does the building inspector prepare and respond to the FIO? We work together, depending on the department, when I receive a foil, I pass it on because sometimes they can better, they're be better able to answer the questions than I am. I might have some of the records, but they'll have more records, so we work together, together the documents. In some case scenarios, I will prepare and send out the final answer to the person. In some case scenarios, if it's a small thing and really just involves like DPW or Steve or the treasurer, I let them handle it through their department and answer it and let me know that they've completed that request.
Okay, thank you. Thanks Peggy. Anything else there, Dorothea?
Not under the building inspector.
Okay, okay, thank you. And we'll move on. Zach, thanks for joining us. I know you're not feeling so well this evening, so. Appreciate you hanging in there with us and giving us your report.
Yeah, no problem. I hope, it was late this week because I was sick three days last week, so it wasn't, I didn't have a chance to get it out to everybody until today. Did everybody have a chance to read it?
Yeah.
Any questions?
Yep.
I have one.
Yeah, Renee.
The speed centuries, I know they came in, and I know that you all have had a lot of other things to do. Do we need to make any decisions about deploying them or is there anything left on our end? Or are you, is your team ready to put those out, or will those have to wait till the spring because of the weather?
No, I can put those out. My plan is in the next month to have those out. I was thinking of alternating one unit on State Street. We don't have a good spot for it. I'm underway unfortunately, but I have two spots available on State Street. One in the eastbound lane and one in the westbound lane. And then the other one I can set up on Jefferson between West Jefferson by Sunset and the other one down by South Street in the westbound lane. And then the one that we have currently, I can take the mounting plates and ship those to other locations more on Village Street, so South Street, another spot on on Jefferson and South Main Street. So, I have areas picked out for them if everybody's fine with those. And then just alternate a week by week.
Alternate, yes, Dan?
I have two questions for you, Zach. One was about, I saw that RG&E took down the tree on Monroe that had been a danger, and you had mentioned in your report that you're going to grind the stumps. Is that something that's done before the winter, during the winter, after the winter?
That can be anytime really, as soon as we have a chance. If the ground grows and that's no big deal, the grinder will take care of all that. So, as soon as time's freed up for us and we can get out there and do it, we'll do it.
Okay, and then the other question I had was on the Rand Creek Bank restoration. I assume that's the one over by Rich Palumbo and by that area. How's that going? What's the status? How much more work is there to be done? And then what's being done for the other one at Rand and South, South and Fountain?
Rand, 44 Rand, I believe the easements are drawn up and signed at this point. I think Elisa might be able to speak better to that, but the plans in place, I think it's just at this point, putting the bid package together to send out for bids.
Yeah, and Scott will be working on that.
Yeah.
Scott harder, yeah.
And then the, the section of creek at Fountain and South, we're still kind of in the planning stages of that and how to approach it. And we brought Scott in who has, he's going to be looking at it and put some ideas down on paper for us.
Yeah, I can add to that too. I did speak with the homeowner, you know, where the creek runs through, and we're going to be sitting down after the holidays and just kind of sorting things out, you know, about how to proceed. So, we'll be taking some action on that, you know, after the meeting, and we'll get back with you folks and let you know. All right. Yep, oh, Dorothea, yes?
Okay, I have some questions. One from Peggy. She said, I see that there was no written report in the packet. I wonder if Zach can enumerate on how many trees have been cut down due to the green light trimming? Where are these trees are located and how many will be replaced? I understand, stand that the contractor had offered to replace some of them.
The contractor did not offer to replace the trees. What they did do is offer to cut the trees down. They're in rough shape just from previous cuts that have been done by RG&E contractors in the past. And what they did when they just came through recently, kind of compromised them to the point where there's no return for them. So, all they did was just bring them down to the ground for us and we'll just replant them.
Yeah, there's a little bit more to that though, Zach, just if I could add really quickly. They did remove the six, six village trees. It's in your report. I just want to just call it to everybody's attention that, you know, RG&E really frankly just poorly pruned, just really butchered the trees. But the, there were three additional trees that the contractor agreed to remove that we, we already had sort of in the hopper to be removed. So, they did that gratis as part of the remediation for essentially some of the poor pruning that they had done. So, unfortunate, we saved thousands of dollars by having them help us with those trees.
The cost for cutting those three trees down surpasses what it would have costed to plant new trees in those six spots, that's for sure.
Zach, the other, sorry, the other really important thing from your report is that Doug is back, and I've been in touch with him, and he said he's getting his strength back up, and I hope he's, his on-ramp is a gentle one back into work until he builds his stamina.
Yeah, this week he's been out in the truck mostly driving for the crew to pick up all the leaves. Today, he did get out and do some raking and it sounded like, you know, he felt good doing it.
Great.
Yeah, he's, he's, he's really come a long way quickly. I know he's got a few extra doctor's appointments and so, you know, it's just back to normal.
Yeah, he's doing great, and he's also going to be helping us with the infrastructure report, so he'll be a resource for us. So, he's not just, you know, back full-time doing really hard physical work. So, we're going to tap into his institutional knowledge, so he can really help us with that. Yep, Dorothea, did you, yes?
I have two more from the public. Our peers commented, could Zach confirm if the two centuries on State Street will be a, will be permanent or not?
Not permanent, but they are going to be, one will be rotated between the eastbound lane and the westbound lane east of the State Street Bridge. So, one week it'll be in the westbound lane down by the village sign, and the following week it'll be in the eastbound lane just east of the bridge.
Okay, Dave Ferris comments for Zach. Grinding stump in front of our house at 27 Monroe is not the highest priority. We recognize that there are many other important items on your plate. Spring is fine. We are pleased that the tree was taken down. Dave Ferris, 27 Monroe.
Glad we were able to get to it, Dave.
Thanks, Dave. Okay, are you sat there, Dorothea?
I'm done.
Okay, anything else for Zach?
I just wanted to make sure that we followed through on having the safety committee talk. So, we were going to circulate emails and get times on calendars, but that hasn't happened yet, so.
Yeah, we were talking about dates today. We're going to be sending that around, so thanks for bringing that up. And I think the next date, we were looking perhaps at the first week of January, as I recall, but we'll send out the email, so we'll keep everybody in the loop on that. Okay, let's see, Jeff does not have any report. Treasurer's report.
If Zach isn't feeling well, do we want to let him go and we'll call him if we need him?
Yeah, we can, if you want it, well, we're going to need you at the end of the meeting, so I can text you though, Zach, how's that?
It's probably just as easy for me to stick around. I appreciate it though, I do. My house is a little chaotic with animals and kids, so getting a nice, you know, break to have a conversation is difficult sometimes, so it's easier here.
If this is the most relaxing part of your day.
Yeah.
Good thing you didn't ride with Steve.
Hey, Brooklyn, how are you?
Really good, how's everyone doing today?
Good, thank you. So, do we want to start in on our treasurer's report, please?
No, I got an email saying everything was okay. We did have some late additions today from over the weekend mail that we added, so I did note those. Voucher 339 was edited, voucher 352 was edited, voucher 355 was edited, as well as voucher 370 to 374 were added. So, just a few more small things to complete our vouchers for this month.
Okay, yes, Lily?
Yes, I have two questions. Item number, and I'm sorry, I should put my glasses on. But my item, 333, downtown decorations for an additional $889.52. Could the trustees have some information on that expenditure, which apparently must have been above what was budgeted?
Those are the red bows. We needed some replacement bows, so we had to get them ordered.
Okay, and then line item, the Zodlin Group, 360 for New York State Canal Corp., $498.50. I'm assuming this is above what the trustees approved previously as a ceiling of, I believe, $1,600 for the Zodlin Group? I don't understand why they were, why.
The cap on that, excuse me, just to interject really quickly, the cap on that, I believe, was 2,000.
Okay, and I believe we reached that previously, in the previous bill pay with them.
So, why are we seeing it again? What was the addition?
Yeah, that's, that's my question. Why are we seeing it again?
I'm wondering if they added it in accidentally again, Lily, you know?
Well, that's my question.
Yeah, I agree with you. You know, we'll do, we'll, we'll give them a call tomorrow, Brooklyn, okay? We'll follow up on that, because I'm wondering if they didn't pull it out of the system and it just went into the next bill. Because remember, they had to adjust it in the last bill too. And we've paid it.
My under, I'm not to interrupt, but I think my understanding was they hadn't actually reached the cap, and that was the remaining part of the cap.
But I thought we paid the remaining part of the cap in the last bill, maybe I'm incorrect. I thought we did.
Oh, we did in the last one?
I thought we did, yeah, I agree with Lily. You know, that's why we, you know, I'll give them a call tomorrow, you know, Brooklyn, we'll work that out.
Yeah, we're looking to it.
Okay, thanks. To be clear to those listening, also, as when we have established a cap, any additional work that is to be, that's proposed to do by the Zodlin Group on that particular job would have to come before the trustees for approval prior to them completing the work. They can't just do the work and then bill us, and then we have to accept it. They need to present it to the trustees first.
Yeah, that's why, that's why it's called a cap, absolutely.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we'll follow up. Any other, any other questions on that for Brooklyn? Yep, oh, you have one more?
This was a big one.
You're on a roll.
I'm wondering when we might expect our quarterly report, so we can get a handle on where, where we stand financially.
So, Mary and I have been doing a lot of inputting. We are in the month of November getting that put in. So, once we get the month of November put in and December, we're hoping that the first meeting in January will have that final full report that goes up until December. You know, we, we were looking at to give you two or three months right now, but it makes more sense to give you that full quarter in January than give you partial bids and then have another update in a month.
Thank you, thank you.
That's practical. Yes, Dorothea?
I have comments from Peggy Caraberas from 81 South Main Street. She wanted to know what the total cost of candlelight night and did the village have to pay for security and how this is compared to the budget? I don't believe we've received the security bill at this time.
We have not received a security bill. Our candlelight bill is still kind of in flux. We did use the village credit card for a few purchases, so we would actually have to receive the billing for that statement in order to pay for a candlelight. But we do have, it does have its own ledger, so everything is kept separately. So, anything, any expenses we do spend on it will be kept into that file. So, once I have every invoice in, I can give a full updated number on what we spent for candlelight night.
So, perhaps we'll have, you know, things in by the next meeting and we can just do a closeout.
Yeah, we're, we're looking for the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah, because it just happened. And I do know that this time around, for example, we had to replace some of the bows, there were replacements of a few things that weren't working, some lights, I think, as well, so.
Just from my department, I know we were in line with previous like 2019, 2018 for our expenses, just because we were open. We did have the public outside. We didn't, you know, do our normal thing, so, but we'll get those numbers together as well. Next question, and I think Lily just addressed this, 360 Zodlin Group, the 49850 Canal Corp. Is this in addition to the 2,000 approved by the Board of Trustees to work on the canal clearcut issue? What is the product, what was the product generated by the allocation?
I can, well, I can speak to what was generated. You know, that, that was the Planning and Zoning Board's response to Seeker and response to the clearcutting plan. So, it was, I read the letter. It was incredibly well drafted. I think we all read the letter, yeah.
Is there available year-to-date report on the budget first expenses? Has the Board of Trustees seen this report and when will it be published? I think Brooklyn already addressed that with the board. And then what is the proposed process for budget development for the coming cycle and how will the public be involved under COVID-19 restrictions?
Well, speaking of, that is kind of perfect timing. I know Mary did initiate the scheduling of the budget meeting process while I was out, but I will be reaching out to all the trustees again to see what works best for you guys. I'm kind of open and available, so whatever works for you guys, if we plan our meetings, you know, three to four weeks out, or if we have every meeting set in stone, that's fine with me, whatever works best for you guys. So, if you like, I can send out a blank calendar for the year 2022, and we can just pick a few days that everybody has that we know we can kind of dedicate to the budget meeting and plan off of that.
Okay. I had earlier said, thanks, Brooklyn. I had earlier said the daytime doesn't work, but it actually might. So, I'll, I'll shoot you an email and kind of give you my available times. We'll go from there.
Sure.
Okay, great. The public interaction, I think that's really going to be a product of the pandemic and seeing we are within-person meetings and the availability of having the meetings back at the halls. So, I think we're kind of waiting on the state to see where that goes. Yeah, I mean, right now, as, as everybody knows, you know, Governor Hochul has increased, you know, masking. So, and we're going into, you know, we're in our winter season. So, I do, I did speak with, with Senator Brown. You know, they're starting their session in January, the first week of January, and the virtual meetings, I believe, Dorothea, correct me if I'm wrong, weren't they scheduled to run through like the 6th of January or something, end of January?
On the 6th of January.
Yeah, 6th, I think it was. And so, I think one of the first actions that, when the session comes about is that they will extend virtual meetings through, I believe, they said April or May, just as a matter of practicality, because, you know, things are still in flux here. We've also had an increase in cases here in Monroe County, I think, as everybody knows. So, we still could be doing things virtually for a few more months here. Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
One more thing before we, before my report is over. I do need approval for our yearly $100 donation to the Pittsburgh Food Cupboard from the GEAR Fund. That check is, is a handwritten check, so I would just need a separate approval from the board to issue that.
So moved.
And what about, oh, so moved, okay, there's a motion?
Second, Lanfear.
Okay.
Okay, roll call. Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Lightkid?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Did you want a motion to approve the vouchers?
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers as written in the report sent at 1:38.
Except for the, the Zodlin Group.
Yes.
It was item 360.
Voucher number 360, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion.
A second, Tim.
Okay.
Okay, trustee Lightkid?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Anything else for Brooklyn, we're good?
Thanks, Brooklyn.
Thanks, Brooklyn. Alrighty, village clerk report.
It's the, is it seven for the public hearing or was that at 7:30?
It's seven o'clock.
We can set it aside. Dorothea, do you want to hold up on your report or is it a quick report?
I only have two small items. They're really not going to take long.
Okay.
The one item I neglected to throw into the report and I'm going to apologize. We received notice, 30-day advance notice for Marie, Mary Ann Warfel for Nutri Ground Coffee for a liquor license. Just so the board is aware, she's looking to have, looks like beer, wine, beer, and societal. at the location. And the board has requested and passed that I let them know when I receive these notifications. Okay?
I have a question.
Sure.
Might we see some sort of an application or, or information regarding the liquor license?
I can send you the application that we received.
Right, because I would be interested in how this might potentially would change her, her operation or hours of operation. Is she talking just about her event space on the one side or is she talking?
It's just for the.
Good to have, that's good to have that information. I think that's.
It's just for the event, it's just for the event space.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you can send that out to the, to the board and, you know, Steve's going to follow up if there's any amendments required for the special use permit.
Yes.
Based on, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. And the other item I have is the healthcare HSA fund, count funding that has to take place on January one. So if I can get approval on that.
That wasn't, wasn't that part of the checks we just approved or is this another one?
Brooklyn might have put it into the checks, but I always get additional, I always get the approval and normally we they're, they're not given, yeah, not till January one. Typically, Mary hasn't put them in, but Brooklyn might have. Just because we're operating differently, I wasn't aware he did that. So if I can go and just.
It was listed, it wasn't put in, I don't think, as a voucher.
So, so we, this is our only meeting before the new year and in order for them to have them on January one, we had to approve this meeting.
Thank you.
So we're, I guess we're double teaming you on it to make sure it gets done. So we need to talk more, Brooklyn. Either way, just so my record, I have an official approval for those HSA fundings.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Lanfear.
The HSA, what is it, HSA?
HSA.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay. Yep, trustee Lanfear.
Lanfear, I.
Trustee Stetser.
Hi.
Trustee Lightkid.
Hi.
Trustee Keating.
Keating, I.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I.
Motion passes. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank, thank you for that. Why don't we switch over to the public hearings? And Dorothea, if you could read the first public hearing?
Sure. One second.
Sure. And, and actually, I do want to say, you know, before we get into the public hearings, that you, those in attendance this evening, you'll notice that the item after the public hearings is for us to set the permissive referendum vote regarding the cannabis law. And if some of you have attended earlier meetings, you know that the Board of Trustees didn't want to just make the decision just amongst the five of us, but really turn this over for all of our residents to be able to weigh in. So, and Dan really spearheaded that and thank you for that, Dan.
Okay, public hearing notice, please take notice that public hearing will be held before the Village Pittsburgh Board of Trustees Tuesday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, seven P M. at twenty-one North Main Street, New York, to consider a local law adopted pursuant to cannabis law, one thirty-one, opting out of licensing, establishing retail cannabis dispensaries within the Village of Pittsburgh pursuant to the state legislature, chapter four seventeen of the laws of twenty twenty-one. The Village Hall will be closed so public during the Board of Trustees meeting, the members of the Village Board will be president, will be present at Village Hall or participating from their respective homes for this public hearing via video conference. If four members participating from their home, that home will be closed to the public as well for reasons stated above. The meeting will be made available for the public to view here through video conferencing. Like a copy of the proposed local law is on file at the Office of the Village Clerk for interest parties may request between eight thirty A M. and three thirty P M. Monday through Friday or on the Village website at W W Village Pittsburgh dot com. There you go. That's our first public hearing.
Okay. Are there any comments from the board?
Do we have to call, make a motion or anything to open it?
Well, we do, but I was just wondering if there are any comments from the board before we open the public hearing. No? Okay, is there a motion?
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Okay, trustee Keating.
Hi.
Trustee Lightkid.
Hi.
Trustee Lanfear.
Hi.
Trustee Stetser.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, I.
Okay, the hearing is open. Okay, thank you. The hearing is open. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak?
If so, please use the raise hand function within Zoom.
Oh, hold on. Mr. Gabriel Diaz, you're allowed to speak.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Hi, Gabe.
Hi. So villagers and trustees, thank you in advance for listening. I wrote my statement today just because I wanted to really work out my ideas. So I want to belabor a point that I expect to hear more than once tonight. If the referendum reveals that the majority of residents do not want to opt in, it will not keep dispensaries away from our area. Penfield and Aronacoid have already voted in favor of opting into dispensaries. That means that if we decline to opt in to this potential major new revenue stream, legal cannabis will be within a ten-minute drive of our village, no matter the outcome. There's no moral victory to be won here and to base no vote or anything like that on old stigmas would be to put a finger in the dyke, hoping to staunch the flow of time. But cannabis is here and even if it has not been present in your personal space, it has always been a presence in colleges, towns and villages, and that's just not going to change. The greatest practical consequence of declining to opt in would be that we will miss out on a tremendous new source of tax, of tax revenue. And if you want to lower taxes and you need to be open to new revenue streams like this one. And so I took a look online and here's some reported tax revenues from other states in twenty twenty-one states, right? So I rounded down for every number, but Alaska has revenue of over twenty-four million, which is thirty-three dollars per capita. Colorado, over three hundred and seven million, which is over fifty-three dollars per capita. Nevada, over a hundred and five million, thirty-four per capita. Washington, over fix, four hundred and sixty-eight million or sixty-one dollars per capita. And I got all these numbers from taxfoundation.org. So, yeah, the tax laws may differ between states and those numbers might differ between states a bit. But to argue over those unknowns is to argue over whether we're going to make a lot of tax revenue or a hell of a lot of tax revenue from opting in. And so those numbers I just offered also demonstrate another point that there is no reason to like wait and see what happens in other villages, because the data is already out there. And I just shared a bit of it with you, but there's a lot more. And when the data exists, there's no excuse not to back up claims with facts. We're not going in blind here. There's data and experience of eighteen other states to draw from. And we should not be making important decisions on the basis of negative sentiment that I do expect to hear or uncertainty or fear when the data is there. Nineteen states have now opened dispensaries over the past few years, each with their own flavor of laws regarding cannabis sales. Of these nineteen test runs, right, there have been no disasters. The sky's not fallen and of course, there are villages that are in many ways similar to Pittsburgh Village in each one of these states. And many of them have opted in. There have been no ensuing disasters that have made it to prime-time media. These villages have not exploded with crime because of this. And there have just been no dramatic repercussions, except perhaps for the incredible tax revenues that we now have the opportunity to enjoy. So I'm really in favor of exploring this opportunity of going to referendum. And obviously, I'm in favor of, of exploring an opt-in. So thank you.
Thank you, Gabe, and thanks for your research, too. Yep, Dorothea, sir, yes.
I have public comment from Peggy Caraberos again. Propose cannabis laws and referendum. As I have testified in previous meetings, I support the Board of Trustees' resolution to opt out of both alternatives. There are many reasons for this action, which have been discussed by the Board of Workshops and other meetings. There are also so many unknowns as to rule out of this law, that the board has made the right decision for our community by opting out. When we know more, perhaps this could be revisited. With the Towns Board's decision to opt out, I hope that the board will reevaluate in action to go to referendum at this time. I don't know, opting out then passing the buck to the village residents in February is a non-decision on the part of the board. The towns opting out makes it even more critical that the village carefully evaluate the options impact implementation of the law with unknown regulations. Hold off on the referendum, please.
I, I just couldn't disagree with that more. It's, it's, first of all, we, as Mr. Diaz says, we have all the information you could ever want. We, we don't need to learn anything else. The information's there if you, if you want to learn it.
Dan, I'm going to ask you to hold your thought because we, we can speak again at the end of the public hearing.
Okay, I'm, I'm a trustee, I can talk. So I'll keep it quick. The, and as for the referendum, it's incredibly important that this, this isn't passing the buck. This is, this is exactly the opposite of asking the people what they want. It's too big a change not to.
Dorothea, any other comments from the public? Thank you.
Yes. Our peers comments, what percentage of state, county or town revenue from the sale cannabis would be received by Pittsburgh Village? What is the projected total and the percentage share of the toll which would come to the village?
Well, that, that's established through the State Cannabis Board. And Dorothea, you and I were speaking about that today, I believe. But the county, it's twenty percent overall within the county and then it's parsed out to, you know, the communities that are opted in. And so at this point, our village would get three percent.
Correct. If the town stays opted out, we wouldn't have to revenue share with the town, so we would get full percentage.
Yeah, and at this point, that's, that's where it's heading. Any other questions? Dorothea, or comments?
Not seen anything. I'm just going to take a quick look at my email, make sure nothing came in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I apologize if I missed anything, but that's what I have for the board at this time.
I did get a little information. I talked to the Board of Elections about this and they said in all likelihood, they can't promise, but in all likelihood, the referendum would be on March fifteenth, which happens to be the third Tuesday in March. Jeff is shaking and said, no, I talked to the B O E Commissioner this week. They said they're not sure yet, but that's what they think it would be.
We are required by law to set this referendum within ten days or, what is it, sixty days, up to sixty days. So the Board of Elections doesn't really have any control over when we set our referendum because that has already been set forth with, with the new, with the cannabis board. Yeah, Jeff.
So we have to have our referendum, permissive referendum within sixty days of moving it to a permissive referendum. So that's sixty days from tonight, should the board decide to opt out tonight and send it to referendum tonight. Sixty days is February twelfth. I would not really want to wait until February twelfth. My, my preference would be that if the board wants to opt out, if the board wants to have a permissive referendum, that it's schedule it for February first with the thought that the Board of Elections may need some wiggle room around that date. But, you know, if you wait till after February twelfth, I'm not sure that there's any ability to really have this referendum and have a count.
Okay, thanks.
I would also ask, I cannot speak tonight. I would also add, what they might be confusing, Dan, is if this if the referendum was decided as January one, it could go to the normal village election time, which I believe is March fifteenth. If we are having a normal election, that would be beautiful. But since we're not, it falls onto a special election anyway. So that really doesn't apply to us because we're in a special category because we don't have a scheduled election for next year.
Yeah, there's a couple other villages that don't have any elections coming up in March fifteenth. And so, you know, there, there's no, they can't, we can't dovetail necessarily on an election that we would be holding. So no matter what, as Dorothea said, it is a special election, so we just have to go with that, you know.
Okay. Our peers did request the patrol, projected total of money. I don't.
I don't think any, any community's been able to really do that, you know.
And we're not voting on that today.
Yeah.
We're opting out today.
Okay, and Jeff, did you want to add something?
I mean, I'm not, I'm only an expert on how to get this thing to where you wanted to get it. I thought we had to have a dispensary in our municipality for us to share.
Correct.
Isn't that correct?
Yes.
So unless we have one here, that's all, that's sort of moved, that, that issue. Okay.
Yes, Dorothea.
Our peers continued with Dan had made mention that there's a lot of information out there. I'm not sure how it goes, but it's been passed down.
So do we want to make a motion to opt out? Do we want to do this one at a time, Jeff?
Well, hang on, we still have a public hearing open, so we would have to make a motion to close the public hearing. But let's make sure that we have everybody's comments before we do that.
I do not have any other comments at this time, so I'll say last call. I've not seen anything in the Q and A. No hands are raised at this time.
Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I will make a motion to close the public hearing, Lanfear.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, roll call, trustee Lanfear.
Lanfear, I.
Trustee Lightkid.
Hi.
Trustee Stetser.
Hi.
Trustee Keating.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, it's back to the board for discussion.
So Jeff, do you want us to do these one at a time or both or?
It, you're going to adopt them one at a time. You could open and close the other public hearing before you did either of those, but it doesn't really matter. You could certainly adopt this one now if you wanted to, if the vote went that way. And then open the next public hearing and then deal with that. It doesn't matter, as long as you do it, whatever you're adopting or not adopting after the closing of the public hearing. I'm probably not being terribly clear.
Somehow I understood that.
I, I do.
Thanks for small favors.
Okay, so do you want to just hold off and we'll vote on each one separately at the end after the second public hearing? Okay, I make a motion to, oh, well, actually, you need to read the, the law for the second public hearing. And then we'll make the motion.
Okay, just to make it a little quicker, I'm not going to pursue into why we're doing the virtual meetings. I think I made that clear the last round. And since I can't speak clearly, it'll save time for everybody involved. Please take, please take notice, a public hearing will be held before the Village of Pittsburgh Board of Trustees on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one at seven P M. Twenty-one North Main Street, Pittsburgh, New York, to consider a local law pursuant to cannabis law, one thirty-one, opting out of licensing and establishing onsite consumption establishments within the Village of Pittsburgh. There you go.
Okay, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second, Lanfear.
Roll call, trustee Lightkid.
Hi.
Trustee Lanfear.
Hi.
Trustee Keating.
Hi.
Trustee Stetser.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, the hearing's now open. Is there anybody from the public wishing to speak? Maybe everybody said their piece before.
I have crickets. And I have read all the comments I've received from Ms. Caraberos.
Okay. Well, there's no comments. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Lanfear.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Yep, trustee Lanfear.
Lanfear, I.
Trustee Stetser.
Hi.
Trustee Keating.
Hi.
Trustee Lightkid.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, it's brought back to the board. Are there any comments from the board? Should we entertain a motion regarding the first law, which is opting out of licensing? which is opting out of licensing and establishing retail cannabis dispensaries within the Village of Pittsburgh?
Do we have to close this, the public hearing first?
We closed it.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so.
I was so moved on the.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Lanfear.
Lanfear, I.
Trustee Stetser.
Hi.
Trustee Lightgift.
I.
Trustee Keating.
I.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, is there a motion for the second law this evening, opting out of licensing and establishing onsite cannabis consumption establishments within the Village of Pittsburgh?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Lanfear, second.
You tied.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call, please.
Okay, trustee Lanfear.
Lanfear, I.
Trustee Keating.
Hi.
Trustee Lightgift.
I.
Trustee Stetser.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, then we'll, I think just pursuant to this, rather than go back up to the other items on the agenda, we'll go to item number five, which would be setting a permissive referendum vote of the cannabis laws. And we already had a discussion and some input from our attorney regarding the dates. And so Jeff, you were thinking that the date probably as a practical practical matter would be February 1st?
I mean, that gives us 12 days or 11 days if something goes anywhere.
Okay, yeah, yeah, just depending on, you know, working out the special special election with the Board of Elections. Is there a much a motion to move to a public referendum on February 1st?
I'll make a motion.
Regarding the the vote of the cannabis laws.
Right, specifically.
The first one, we're doing separate, you're right, you're right. Yep, so we want to do, go, go ahead.
Specifically to hold a referendum on whether cannabis dispensaries should or should not be allowed in the village.
Is there a second?
All second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Ke.
May we do discussion first?
Oh, sure, discussion, of course, yes.
Sure. Just just a brief comment. We've talked about this at past meetings, so I want to be respectful of everyone's time. To me, personally, I don't see this as a matter of giving the public a voice by this act because of the fact that by petition, there is able to be a referendum. So to me, what this is about is the use of public taxpayer funds. And I think that the the notion of having a petition in order to have a referendum is is a reasonable step to take to make sure that the referendum is something that is actually desired before incurring the expense. So I do fully see the place for a referendum. And I respect all the opinions that have been weighed in on this matter. Personally, I don't think that it's it's our role to call for an automatic referendum at this point by by this board. Thank you.
Thanks, Justin. Any other comments from the board?
Lanfear.
Yes, yes, Lily.
You have a question. Justin, do you happen to know how many signatures would be required in order to bring it to referendum by petition?
My calculation, and please jump in, anybody, if you think this is incorrect, but it seemed to be about 20% of the voters registered during the past election. And based on my calculation, which I did quickly a couple of days ago, I think that was 208 signatures. But I welcome anybody else's correction to that math. So that seems like a reasonable number of signatures before going to the the referendum.
So may I understand, Jeff, that if if we were to vote, if 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 I were to vote or a person was to vote, not to hold a referendum, the that means that the next step would be then for villagers to then start the process. It's not, it's not an automatic, we have to have a referendum and that we're going to have one one way or the other. And we're going to spend $5,000 and have a referendum.
We talked about this many times, that this was the way.
Well, even so, even so, if we talked about it 100 times, Dan, I would like to have my 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 thought completed and answered. So thank you very much. Yes, Jeff, my question was to you. Does this, for us to have, decide not to have a referendum by decree, by by vote, that this then would put it in the hands of villagers to decide whether they wanted to bring it to referendum? So it's almost like villagers choosing in in both ways, to have the referendum and to vote in a referendum. Is that, is that correct?
I'm not sure I understand the question completely, but let me tell you, that's all right. Let me let me tell you how I understand this.
Okay.
The legislature has established two options. The first option is to allow for a petition to, for the pot, for the 20% of the registered voters, sign a petition requesting a referendum. And I think that has to be done within 30 days. And if that happens, then there'll be a referendum. The second alternative that the legislature offered was the municipal board can send it directly to a referend. So tho- those are the two options. If you decided not to send it, the board decided not to send you a referendum, then in order for there to be a referendum, there would have to be a petition signed by 20% of the electorate. Does that help, Willie?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Any any other questions or comments, Lily? Okay, yeah, because my understanding, and Dorothea, maybe, I I don't believe we, you know, because we have been having these discussions. And the cannabis laws have been on the agenda almost every single meeting. Really, that we've had, we've sort of made the point of always kind of bringing this back in the public arena. Have we had any comments coming in regarding a concern over going even to a referendum based on all the discussions our boards already had?
That I do not recall. We have received comments regarding having it or not having cannabis in the village. But we have not had one saying, please don't do a referendum outside of what I read from Ms. Caraberos tonight.
Yeah, just tonight. Okay, okay, that that's helpful. Okay, appreciate that. Yes, Renee.
I feel a little different. Justin and I have talked about this previously, and I I know we feel different about the automatic referendum. It's very important to me. This is a, this is a big issue. I I really want to know, I mean, we have a mechanism in place that we can automatically put in place here to let every single resident who votes tell us what they want here on both, you know, we have two separate laws. And to me, it's very important to signal that we want to hear from everyone. We want the voters to turn out. Not just the people who come to our meetings or who have time to to submit comments. This is one of the few times on such a big issue for us to actually get a real pulse from our voters and let them decide. So I feel a little differently than Justin does. I do feel like it's worth it to have an automatic referendum. And I think that sends a different message to our residents that we do want them to turn out. We do want to hear from them versus making them force a petition. And in the middle of holiday season and the pandemic going around and selecting signatures, maybe they can do it digitally. I don't know. But I think sending it to automatic referendum sends a very clear message that we want to hear from from the people of our village.
Yeah, I, thank you, Renee. Renee, I'm in agreement with your comments as well. And I think, you know, we really, I really feel comfortable that we vetted this in our discussions over the past several months. And we have not heard anything about this until this evening about somehow now, you know, the possibility of a petition or not. I do think that there's really an upside to this, as Renee said, that we want to hear from everybody. You know, this is a big deal. So I I'm in support of taking this to a referendum, so we, everybody can vote. Any other comments? Yes, Dorothea.
I have public comment, Art Pierce. Thank you, Justin and Lily, for your comments and questions regarding the process of petition by the residents or the trustees to initiate transparency and full disclosure is greatly appreciated. It is a complex process and all the information is appreciated.
Thank you, Art. Yeah, I feel that we've been very transparent. This has been on the agenda for, I can't even tell you how many meetings. I mean, really, since this all came about, I mean, we've, we and we've made a point of always putting it on the agenda for easily the last several months, you know, so the public could weigh in, just even on these matters as we were discussing them. Yes, Lily.
Yes, I agree with you. The one point that that I don't think that we clearly stressed was the expense to the taxpayers. That, you know, we kept saying, yes, the referendum, but we didn't also, I don't think, clearly make the point that, yes, it comes with a price. And do you accept the price? And so I I understand what Justin is is saying, that they would also like an opportunity to weigh in whether whether they feel the expense is worth it. But as trustees, it is up to us to determine, I believe, whether we feel the expenses is justified. And that's the decision that we're making at this time.
As a, you know, Dorothea, can you speak to the expense of what it would be roughly for the election? We we did.
And also that it is budgeted for every year that we have a special election in our budget. And so.
Yeah, yeah, but thank you, Dan. Yeah, that's a good point.
We typically budget for the election expense inspectors. Normally, that is reimbursed by the Board of Elections since they run the village elections. This is different in the way that the this election would be run by the clerk's office. We would be renting the machines from the Board of Elections. They couldn't give me a set amount on this because they just couldn't answer the question. We would have to pay for the election inspectors. We'd have to pay for the ballots in as well as absentee ballots. So there is a cost, giving you a solid number. I'm going to say, you know, looking just alone on these inspectors, you're looking 800 to 900, depending on the number of inspectors. I'm anticipating four. So plus the machine rental, I'm going to assume they're not going to charge us an arm and a leg.
Right.
And the ballots, a couple hundred dollars. So there is a cost.
So we're looking at, should we say roughly 2,000? Would it say?
To be safe, to be.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be on the high range just based on, you know, the experiences in the past. I would like to just bring some $2,000, $2,000 to hear from every single voter in our village. I think that is a small price to pay. I also would just like to give you some good news. I think that'll help us, even if we do exceed what is budgeted for, you know, that we had already in the budget for the elections. This came from, excuse me, the Office of the Controller of Monroe County. Our village's share of the third quarter of 2021 sales tax receipts is $171,000. This is compares to $152,000 distributed for the same quarter in 2020. So we kind of had a little mini windfall of sales tax receipts come in. So I would think that maybe even a little portion of that, you know, whether it's $1,500 out of that could go to hearing from all of our residents on this referendum. Yes, Dorothea.
I have a person wishing to speak to the board.
Pardon me?
I have someone wishing to.
Yes, of course, yes. Name and address.
Yes, John, if you can give your name and address, you're free to speak.
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay, great. John Cuthura, Five Stone Gate Lane. And it's really great to, you know, have this opportunity. And I appreciate everybody in the village possibly getting the opportunity to vote on these two very important questions. The one thing I have for each of the trustees and and the mayor is I think it would be important for the public to understand each of your positions. So if you could publicly, you know, say how you would vote on each of the two referendum questions, that would be great.
Anybody want to chime in?
And this is trustee Lanfear. I have to think about that for a moment because it's anticipatory in that if things occur or come to our attention between now and February, as a person, as a voting in a referendum, I would be voting as a villager, not as a trustee necessarily. I'd be voting, my vote would be cast as a as a resident. And perhaps I might have a different opinion in in the when it came to cast my ballot than I than I do as a trustee determining the method by which we will get to that referendum, which is the opting out vote. So as a trustee, I am voting to opt out for the interest of the residents to be able to then express their views in at the at the polls, at the village polls. So but how I would vote in a referendum, I think, to me, is a little bit of a different issue then, if that makes sense. And if it doesn't, please, I will, I will try to elaborate.
Yeah, oh, yes, Jeffrey.
So I don't know really whether this is my business or not, but certainly when you vote, and this is sort of what Lily was saying. When you vote as trustees, that's the public's business. However, when you vote as an elector, that is not the public's business unless you personally make it the public's business. And the whole theory of our democracy is that those, the the votes of a democratic electorate are confidential. You know, nobody, so, you know, I certainly your votes as trustees are and ought to be public, your private votes, I think, should be your business. But that's, that's just my take on it.
Yeah, and I think, you know, all of our discussions that we've had, and, you know, Lily makes some very good points as well, and thank you, Jeff, for weighing in. You know, we're here to conduct business on behalf of our village. And the decision that we made as a board was that we wanted to hear from the residents, you know, and have you weigh in and not unilaterally make a decision as a board, not unilaterally, that's not the right word. But, you know, just the five of us somehow making this decision for our community. And so I I let it stand at that.
I I respect your question, and I'm also kind of curious as to why you're asking it. So maybe it's a conversation for another time offline. So that's basically it.
Sure. Yep, any other?
I, there was one bit of information that we've talked about at prior meetings, but there's a lot of people on this meeting. So it it does make sense to talk about just really quickly. There was no real option to opt in and then hold a referendum. The only way we could have done it is to opt out and hold a referendum just because of the way the laws are structured. So know that we kicked around just about every idea under the sun, and this, this was the one we came to. It may not be the ideal one, but it's the one we came to.
That's the only way to have a referendum on the issue.
Yeah. Yeah, that was sort of the bottom line, I think.
So so in some ways, I'm trying to answer John's question and saying, you know, that that's not an indicator of how we would have voted. It's just kind of how procedurally how we did it. I don't, I don't know if we would have voted that way or not.
Yep. Okay, so meanwhile, the public hearing is closed. We are back to the board for discussion. Is there any further discussion from the board or is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to.
Oh, Jeff? Yes, hang on. We're not there yet.
I thought there was a motion on the floor.
Yes.
And what, I'm sorry, I apologize then. Thank you.
Yes.
It was just for the dispensaries.
Right, for, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Do we need to have the date in the motion?
Yes.
And we said February 1st?
Yes.
Dorothea, okay.
Was that?
Tentative date of February 1st?
Tentative date, February 1st, but allowing time to more coordinate with the Board of Elections.
I have a question for Jeff. You said you think that gives us enough wiggle room to make the the deadline. What if we were to encounter some problems and that wasn't enough extra time?
I don't know the answer to that.
With the Board of Elections, okay.
I I don't know the answer to that. I would, I would say, to be really comfortable, I would amend the motion to say on or before February 1st.
That's, let's do that.
Great.
On or before? So what if they can't do it until?
Then we make a subsequent motion or something, I don't know.
Well, no, I mean, no, I mean. Well, no, I mean, I might, I think that if, if they said, well, we can't do it till February 2nd, I don't think that requires any further motions. I mean, I don't know how you're going to vote, but let's say you pass this resolution, then you would just, you know, okay, we'll have it on February 2nd. And if if we felt like we needed to do a motion setting that date because it violates this motion, I guess we could do that. But I'm, I'm only concerned that the county get the message that it's got to be honored before.
Could we say honor before February 1st or the clerk's discretion?
Yep.
Oh, that would give that wiggle room there for like.
The clerk's discretion or the Board of Elections discretion?
It's.
Clerk's.
Clerk's.
Okay.
Clerk.
Because the board would have, the Board of Elections would have to coordinate with her anyway.
Yeah.
Right.
And she's acting on behalf of our village, you know, to set this up, so.
Yeah, I would say clerk's discretion, provided that it's before February 11th.
Okay, so do we all understand where we're going with this motion?
Honor before February 1st.
Right.
Clerk's discretion until February 14th.
11.
You just, 11. See, no, I don't understand. Hey, Dorothea, you're writing this down, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I was trying to amend it, but, okay.
This, this looks very disjointed because, but it's because we're dealing with, you know, the Board of Elections, who frankly has given us very little guidance. I mean, that's, that's the reason we're, we're struggling.
And I would just clarify for the board, we're not the only village struggling with that. I have spoken to several clerks, American testified and on the phone. We all cannot get the same information, let alone understand what we're doing to the point of explaining it to the village courts that we're dealing with. It's been very difficult.
Yeah, they, they've been counting the votes for the last election that went so long, yeah. They only really got back to work this week.
Okay, so we have a motion?
We have a motion by Dan, a second by Renee, amended to include the language with allowing the date fluctuations, so I think we're good for a roll call.
Okay.
Just in agreement.
Okay, thank you, let's go.
Okay, Trustee Lanfair?
Lanfair, I.
Trustee Lightken?
No.
Trustee Keating?
Keating, I.
Trustee Stetser?
I.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, I.
Motion passes.
I'll make a motion, the same motion, but for lounges with all the same terms.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, Trustee Stetser?
Hi.
Trustee Keating?
I.
Trustee Lightken?
No.
Trustee Lanfair?
I.
Mayor Plummer?
I.
Motion passes.
Okay. So we'll get with the Board of Elections and see how we can set this up.
We will.
Okay. Well, since we're on public hearings, why don't we do the setting of the public hearing for the New York Stretch Energy Code? Do we have the information on that? Hang on.
Um, there's nothing to read, we're just setting the.
Oh, we're setting the date, of course.
Yep, and I just need a calendar in front of me, and we're getting Q and A, and I have comments as well.
Okay.
Just to give a heads up. Okay, the board decides to set this public hearing January 11th. Looks like the date I should. Yeah, I'm comfortable, I can have the public hearing notice in.
Okay. Lilly?
Would I understand that we would have a copy of this energy code, well, I think is quite a large file, actually, on that stretch energy while in advance of the the public hearing so that we would be, so that we have time to ask the agent before the meeting?
Yeah, it's, yes, hang on, Jeff and Steve?
So the local law just is giving Steve the authority to apply the Stretch Energy Code just like the New York State Fire Prevention and Building Code and just like the other energy code. It's a supplement. So the board's not adopting the code. The board is allowing Steve to enforce it.
Does that mean, Jeff, though, that it circumvents other boards that would normally be involved, like the HPP or?
HPP has no, no jurisdiction over
this. I haven't seen this, so I have no idea what it encompasses.
This is all part of our climate smart community, community program that we all have adopted. And so this is part of really best practices moving forward. And this helps us to accrue points, and Steve maybe can speak to that too. So we can accumulate enough points to get grant funding where it isn't matching grants. It's direct funding for different projects that we want to do that are sustainable within our community. Steve, yes?
So let me, let me, can I finish first?
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, yeah, go ahead.
So if you look at, at the New York State Fire Prevention and, or the Building Code section of our village code, it talks about the New York State Fire Prevention Building Code, the New York State Energy Code. And you, I'm probably would have a pretty safe bet that none of you have ever read those codes. Those are something that Steve enforces. The Stretch Energy Code is a supplement to the New York State Energy Code, and Steve would enforce it just like he's enforcing the current energy code. So, yeah, and there's no other board. No, there is, there is no board in the village which has jurisdiction over any of the issues that Steve deals with for those codes. So this is not a, not a jurisdictional issue, it's just a supplement to the current energy code. Did I get that right, Steve?
Yes, what, what this is, it, it, it's a little more stringent requirement. You know, I mean, as far as like ceiling insulation would be, would be larger or more proficient. Wall insulation increases, it, it just increases the energy efficiency.
Of the R value.
R value, I need construction. And just so the board know, I haven't been able to coordinate because of other training. But next week, I am taking two courses on the New York Stretch Energy Code. So I will have a lot more information at that point on it. But like I said, due to other training that that happened to be at the same time when they were teaching this, I wasn't able to do it yet. But prior or before the public meeting, I will have taken training on the New York Stretch Energy Code. So I will have more information to.
Okay.
More.
Thank, thank you, thank you, Steve.
Yeah, and thanks, Steve, Steve, for getting up to speed and taking all the training. That's really great, that's helping us, thank you. Meanwhile, yes, Dorothea?
Sorry, I have some public comment that came in after everything was said and done with the last, with the marijuana laws. Dave Ferris is providing comment to the board, and he just requested I attach it to the minutes so that you know it was received. We did receive comments from a gentleman named Paul, but he didn't provide his address. And I'm not familiar with a Paul that we normally have speak on these meetings. So I can give the comments, but typically we ask for a name and address before comments are read. So it's up to the board.
He could forward, forward his comments to you, and, you know, we could attach it to the minutes.
I'd be happy to do that. I did ask for his address as well.
Okay, okay, great, okay. Let's go forward that. Is that it?
That's it for me.
That's on the last item, okay, we're, we're back to setting the date for the public hearing, January 11th. Anybody?
Some moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, roll call, Trustee Lightken?
I.
Trustee Lanfair?
I.
Trustee Stetser?
I.
Trustee Keating?
I.
Mayor Plummer?
I.
Motion passes.
Okay. Well, while we're on energy, let's go right to item number seven. Resolution adopting the New York State Unified Solar Permit.
I guess I'm going to have the same question.
To that, we spoke about this earlier today.
Yeah, so, so that, this, this does have that implication, Lily, but it's not accurate. This is just adopting a uniform solar permit. So this is just like a building permit that comes after all of our other board approvals. It doesn't eliminate any board approvals. It comes after, you know, if they, if it was a big array that needed site plan, they'd go through site plan. They'd go through the HPP, and then Steve would use this unified solar permit to do the actual permitting. So they don't get to permit until they get the planning board if needed and HPP approval if needed.
It's purely a template for streamlined permitting through New York State. And basically that they, it allows them or allows us the same thing, credits for, towards a climate smart community.
Points.
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 Yeah.
Zach, did I answer your question, Lily?
Yes, yes, it did, because it wasn't, there was nothing in the packet. So I didn't know what, I, you know, couldn't do.
Wasn't, the permit wasn't in there?
Well, the resolution was.
Yes, it was in there, but we, we didn't know that it was after all of the approvals. So you cleared that up.
All right, good. It would, it would actually take a code change to remove those other jurisdictions. You couldn't do that just with a resolution.
Okay, we have the resolution before us. Any further discussion or is there a motion? Yes, Justin?
Yeah, reading, reading through the this permit and the associated document, it ends up going into a 218-page New York State Solar Guidebook. And it's, it's quite a lengthy document, there's a lot to wade through. It does talk about site plan, it talks about HPP approval being required. I guess that when I look at our own code, actually, one of the things that that I did come up with in a quick read of the, the Solar Guidebook is that there are model solar codes that actually look a lot better than our village laws on solar panels, which tend to be pretty vague and not very helpful in talking about the sizing of these systems, especially as they might be appropriate to different lots and that kind of thing. So maybe this is a little bit aside from that discussion, but it seems like there's more that we can do to figure out how to regulate solar panels. I guess I'm just, I understand from what Mr. Turner said that this does not bypass any village code or approval processes required by other boards. I just get concerned when I see that the, the small size solar system that's referred to in this permit actually takes up at least 1,350 square feet of contiguous space. You know, that's bigger than, than any village backyard, and they're talking about that as small. So I guess I just wanted to, it seems like this question has already been answered, but I don't want to make this, I want to make sure that we're not bypassing any village laws or making anything more making the review easier by implementing this process.
I'm looking at, I, I want to make sure I'm looking at the right section. It says, application process for small-scale photovoltaic, photovoltaic system installations that are under the 25 kilowatt, is that the, the component you're talking about?
Yeah, where it says, I mean, the 25 kilowatt, when you measure out the size of those panels, it's going to be up to 1,650 square feet or so, which is actually pretty, pretty big in terms of, you know, it's bigger than most village backyards, not including setbacks and all that kind of stuff.
I don't think it, it's, it's connoting that we would have 25 kilowatt systems. I think it's just defining what a small system in terms of what solar applications would be. Steve, can you weigh in on that? I see you.
That is what NYSERDA would consider as small from their size. I just want to mention, we have discussed and have been starting to look into creating a model solar law for the village.
Right.
We should have one, there, most communities now do have model solar laws. And then we can define more, Justin, what this village would, you know, our size limitations based on our structures and our properties. This does not circumvent any of that as far as controls of the planning board or the HPP.
Yeah, yes, Justin?
Yeah, thank you, Steve, and I appreciate the, the clarifications on this. I think we should add that to the list of code that we're going to review, and I hope that takes care of things.
Justin, you read my mind. Put it, put it on that list, yeah, that would be great. Okay.
Dorothea?
Yes, oh, yes, thank you, I missed the hand there.
Okay, Mr. Pierce has a comment. He says, what is the village code regarding solar panels, residential and commercial structures? What board reviews, review and approve PB, HPP?
Both.
Okay.
And they have voted, there's at least one commercial space that has it, and there's definitely one residential that I know of that went through, there's two now, Jeff. So.
Actually.
There's three now.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, Lilly?
I, one of the reasons I wanted to clarify this is that I did receive a call from a member of the HPP with voicing concerns and the fact that a great deal of research was done by this board member regarding solar and HPP guidelines, which they have, have been using. So I just wanted to verify that indeed those would be, still remain as a part of the process going forward, even under new construction. I think Steve mentioned earlier the term new construction. Well, new construction also falls under the purview of the HPP. So would they be assured that if, under new construction, let's point to 75 Monroe as an example, decide that they would implement or incorporate solar into their design, that that would then also be reviewed by both HPP and if it triggers site plan also, even though it's new construction?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, just like I said, this, dropping this permit does not circumvent any controls we have over solar, HPPs, any solar panel visible from a public way is the same as if you wanted to change a window, door, siding, anything.
Yeah, I mean, you know, really what we're looking at, and again, it's, it's all about, you know, looking at best practices and sustainability and accruing the points as an adopted climate smart community, you know, to move forward in a positive direction. In fact, the entire program is really geared to a positive outcome. So this isn't about altering our code in any way, shape or form, or usurping any other, you know, purviews of other boards. At least that's my understanding, am I correct with that, Jeff? Okay, I'm getting a nod, okay. Okay, Dorothea, yes?
Okay, I'm going to apologize, I missed this comment, but it does kind of tie to both items. We just did the Stretch Energy and the Unified Solar Permit. Peggy Paragara says, what OS the relationship between this and the resolution to adopt the New York State Unified Solar Permit? What is the urgency? What are the implications for the local historic preservation code, which is not part of the zoning code? What does HPP think about this? And SHPO, SHPO have been consulted on the implications. Please take care and understand the implication, is there a rush to approve this?
There is no implication to the Historic Preservation Board in regards to this permit. Does not change any of their authority, any of their approvals. This, this permit is only a streamlined form generated by NYSERDA in New York State in order for everybody to, when they're permitting a solar panel system, to fall under the same guidelines.
And actually, any, I, my understanding is all. And, and actually, any, I, my understanding is all the climate smart communities, you know, villages, towns, cities, whatever, are adopting this. In other words, this is just simply going statewide. Am I correct, Steve? You know, this is just sort of standardizing that process and streamlining it.
Yeah, like you said, we, this does not circumvent any board's authority over their uh, powers to, um, approve or disapprove of any installation.
Okay, yep, thank you, Jeff. And then we're, we're gonna close this out.
Yeah, everybody's got to understand, think about this like a building permit. Building permit doesn't do anything to the H P B or planning board jurisdiction. It's the last step of the process. It's a, it's a building permit for solar. That's all it is.
Well said. Thank you. One last comment and then we're gonna move on with this.
Okay, um, Dave Ferris comments, how does the change of the current approval process of the, how does this change the current approval process of the building inspector?
Doesn't. It doesn't. I still have to have both boards approve an installation prior to even applying that permit. Like you said, it's just a standard form to, to, to issue permit. And I would still issue our regular permits, so we have it on file in our numbers. It's just a standard form through NYSERDA in New York State. It, it gives them knowledge of, of that installation.
Okay, thank you. I think, you know, we've answered a lot of similar questions in a number of different ways and I'm, I'm hoping everybody's pretty clear about this resolution. So there is a resolution before the board. Is there a motion? Anybody?
I'll make a motion to approve.
To approve the resolution adopting the New York State Unified Solar.
So we're just doing the solar one, correct? The unified solar permit?
That's what's before us.
Yep.
Is there a second?
I'll make a second.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
A second.
Okay, roll call. Trustee Liken.
Hi.
Trustee Lanfair.
Hi.
Trustee Keating.
Hi.
Trustee Stetser.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, that's great.
Thank you all. It's a very good thing for the community.
I think so too. Thank you. Well, while we're sort of on a roll here, um, item number eight, uh, the donation guidelines and tree donation application. Um, let's call that up. You all received those documents. Were there any comments? Jeff, thanks so much for your help on this.
I did have one quick question about, uh, and Lily may be able to answer this. Uh, Lily, you sent the information about the cost of the plaque. Is that already factored in with the cost of the tree donation? It's, the way it's written makes it sound like it is, but I was confused because the information came after, so I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you. That was the intention when I first contacted the board last month regarding the donation, that the, the don, the donation would include a plaque and a tree and a planting. It was all one, just like when you, uh, when you donate a bench, what you're, what you're purchasing is, uh, a bench and the plaque and the installations, the same premise.
Okay. Any other questions on the applications? The forms? I mean, I think they're, they're pretty straightforward. I think it's sort of similar to what we would do for a bench anyway. Is there a motion to adopt these, uh, donation guidelines in the tree donation application?
So moved, Lanfair.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Roll call.
Trustee Liken.
Hi.
Trustee Keating.
Hi.
Trustee Stetser.
Hi.
Trustee Lanfair.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi. Okay, we also, um, have, uh, an item to, um, accept a tree donation, uh, from Ms. Barbara Becker for four hundred and fifty dollars, and she has provided all of the information. I believe Dorothea has it. Is there a motion to accept this donation of the tree?
I make a motion that we accept a donation from Ms. Becker for a tree to be planted in the Village of Pittsburgh in honor for family.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Roll call.
Trustee Stetser.
Hi.
Trustee Liken.
Hi.
Trustee Lanfair.
Lanfair, I.
Trustee Keating.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
How are we, um, how are we communicating to her our thanks and that it was accepted and?
I literally am hitting send on the letter right now.
Great.
Yeah. Um, no, it's really, it's really a nice, nice thing. Well, why don't we just move on? Because I know, um, we have people waiting to speak on, uh, item number nine, Seasons of Light. And I, I think, is, is, Teresa, are you speaking on behalf of this project?
She has her hand raised, so I'm gonna allow.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And you're able to speak now. All right, can you hear me?
Yes, hi Teresa.
Hi, how is everybody?
Good, how are you?
Good. So we handed in the proposal. Would you like me to read it?
Oh.
I did not see a proposal in the packet. I'm.
No, we didn't get a proposal.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was told we had had it in. Dorothea, is it not in?
No, I got that late in the day that I seen that's yet and he sent me about five o'clock, so.
Would have been too late for us to probably receive it, but.
All right.
Let me, I can share it on the screen with the board if you'd like.
Yeah. I can go over it. So there's a group of residents who would like to promote, propose a new tradition in our, uh, village called the Season of Lights. This would involve lights or a symbol of light to symbols, I'm sorry, involve lights or a symbol to be set up at three or four different areas throughout the town, Village of Pittsburgh. The Season of Lights would begin with Diwali and run through the Lunar New Year. Next year, that looks like, uh, ten twenty-four, that's when Diwali begins and the Lunar New Year is one twenty-two. The lights and, or symbols of these holidays along with Christmas, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa would be displayed. There will also be a small yard sign accompanying the lights and symbols. This small yard sign would, will describe the holidays that are included in the Season of Light and will contain an educational piece to each holiday. Our goal is to make all of the residents feel welcome, of our residents feel welcome, and remind our residents as well as those who travel through uh, and work in Pittsburgh, that our town is made up of people who share similar values that can support and learn from each other. Some of these values include relationships, family, gifting, taking care of others, faith, examining our responsibilities and obligations with others in mind. We have vetted this idea through Mayor Plummer, through many friends and neighbors in Pittsburgh, and, uh, including Pittsburgh Mom Facebook group where there was a lively discussion about the love of lights around the holiday season. We are proposing that a pilot be started this season or for the rest of the season. Um, at the bottom of that page, there are some examples. We had a small yard sign made. And there are, uh, there is a flag for Kwanzaa and a lantern for Diwali and two red lanterns for the Lunar New Year. And we would like to, um, propose that we put these near the, uh, Christmas tree and menorah at four corners as a pilot. These items would be re, be able to be reused, um, year after year. Eventually, what we would like to see is this small collection of lights, um, to be placed near um, of maybe a few entrances in the village, such as on Washington Street where the tree is right now, in that little, uh, court, sort of corner park area by the railroad and any other appropriate areas that might have a little space.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Therese. They, you know, they approached me about this. I said, let's bring it back to the board. I think, you know, it's an opportunity to, to share, you know, to share traditions and customs and be inclusive. Any other comments from the board on this? Are you interested in the pilot for the rest of the season? Oh, I see a little.
Yeah, yeah, it seems great, Teresa. Thank you to you and whomever else helped you put this together.
Sure.
One quick question, Teresa, um, and maybe Dorothy, you, I see seventy dollars on there. Are you, um, is this fully sponsored or are you asking for the village to, um, incur cost for this, um, season?
This is fully sponsored. This is, these are, these would be donated.
So there's no, you're not asking for any financial?
Not, not right now, no. We, we wanted to, we wanted to be able to sponsor it and to be able to, like I said, pilot it, get feedback, uh, see how it looks, see how it fits in. Yeah, so.
You're coming to us with the idea, you know, essentially we'll, we'll provide some spaces for you in the village.
So not a village sponsored thing. I got you. Okay. That's what I was asking. That's what I was getting at.
You know, it's similar to like, we provide the space for the menorah, the tree. Okay, gotcha. Yep. Any other comments from folks? Yeah, oh, yes, Lily, raise your hand up.
I did, thank you. It's difficult, a little bit difficult because, um, this is the first that I've seen the proposal. So I, I, I think I have some questions, but I haven't really formulated them very well and I apologize. I, I understand this, that they would be the signs that we're looking here, uh, on the screen and that any resident, of course, is free to put that sign in their yard. You don't need, you know, a municipality's permission to do so. So I would assume that that would already be happening in the community, that people would pu, put these signs in their yards. I would like to clarify that we are specifically being requested for, um, spots, and I would, I would like to have them clarified, uh, pinpointed where these si, signs would be placed and who would be responsible for placing them and removing them and also their upkeep for the time that they're up. So.
Teresa, sorry, go ahead, Lily. Finish up.
What I'm understanding is that this group would like to donate, let's call it four signs, to the Village of Pittsburgh with the request that they be placed in four specific locations. I'm just using that, that, that figure arbitrarily because I, I don't know how many exactly, um, places are being requested. If, if that the request, I'd like to be very specific about what is being requested of, of us as a municipality.
Right now. Teresa, do you mind covering it again? I know you did mention it before, but, you know, just to highlight that again.
Yep, as a pilot, we are requesting this, this one sign, the flag, the two red lanterns and the one, um, small, uh, kind of bronze lantern, it lights up. It's a solar light. We are requesting that those be put near the Christmas tree and the menorah in front of the Mitchell Pearson Building at Four Corners. It would be, oh, sorry, go ahead. It, it would be, so this would be a pilot to see how it looks, to see how people, uh, see, you know, any reactions or plus or minuses from people or, um, ways that we can improve the display. What we would like in the future is if we could find a few areas, one of them would be like where the Christmas tree is right now on Washington, on the corner of Washington, where that little pocket is where the tree stands next to the, um.
Remembrance car.
Mm-hmm, thank you, thank you. I couldn't think of the name of that. And maybe, maybe there are one or two other entrances to the village that have room like that, that would be able to handle this kind of a small display.
But for now, for now, just for the remainder of the season, if I'm understanding what you're saying, you're looking at simply the one location at Four Corners where currently we have a tree and a menorah to just put in, you know, the items that you mentioned.
Right.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thanks for that clarification. Does that help, Lily?
Sorry, I have to unmute. Ah, yes, it does. Thank you very much. So I want to be clear, the proposal now, um, currently, I understand that the, the both menorah, I want to be, and the tree are both on, on, uh, a property owner's property. Our property, the village property, is right in front of that. So we would have the right to place a sign in the green sward that belongs to the Village of Pittsburgh without going to the property owner and asking permission to place the sign. Do I have that correct? I mean, we, there's a property owner that owns the Phoenix Building and the lawn goes up about halfway, and then we have a green sward right of way that belongs to the village. So what we're talking about is placing this sign in that, in that section that belongs to the village over which we have jurisdiction.
Yeah, and, and I actually frankly, I think, I believe that the tree and the menorah are actually, um, I believe the menorah actually is on village property.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah, and, um, the tree is for the most part on village property. That maybe can add into that. And then really what the owner of the Phoenix Building provides is the power, is the electricity. You know, to light, light everything.
Yes, yeah, but also permission to put the things there if it was, uh, imposing on him. So, um, I, I, as a pilot, uh, and strictly as a pilot, uh, I personally would have no objection to having the sign placed with the lanterns with the understanding that also the group would be very aware uh, of the upkeep of the sign if it were to blow over, or the lanterns were to blow over, that they would be responsible for it, for their upkeep, so that it doesn't look, okay.
Right, it's trashy, yeah.
Right, perfect, okay, great, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion before the board? Is there a motion to approve this?
Uh, trustee Liken.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, you know what? He's not on my screen right now.
No problem.
I'm sorry, yeah, Justin.
Yeah, just, um, so the, uh, the current, the menorah there is, um, uh, who gave approval for that and, and who's, whose property is that? That, that's private property, is it? I just want to see what the precedent is and, and I'm also curious if the village has ever placed uh, any symbols, um, uh, or forms of expression in, in that space from different groups.
Uh, the menorah and the tree, I think, as I just mentioned, are on village property. And, um, the power to light both the tree and the menorah is provided by the owner of the Phoenix Building. And, and the, in terms of approval, boy, um, somebody's got to help me with that. I think that's kind of, I don't know. Been a while, you know, it's been there a while. Yes, Dorothea.
Um, the village actually issues a non municipal use permit for the menorah lighting.
Oh, for that lighting. Oh, that's right, we did that already, yeah, yeah, but it's on our property.
And the village and the town pay for the tree, so I think we take turns, so I'm gonna say we don't get approval for the tree.
Right.
We just ask the owner and work that out, yeah.
Yeah. Yep, Justin.
Uh, so would this then be a non municipal use permit or what, what is, uh, up for our consideration this evening?
Um, now seeing the presentation, my guess is that would have been, yeah, been the form I would have had them fill out.
You know, we weren't quite sure what it was because we didn't get the, the, all the materials ahead of time, but, um.
That's, I think, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Lily, sure.
Now that, now that Justin has pointed that out, and I think it's true, I think that that would be correct. And I think we should follow our procedure and our policy as we have done in the past. And, um, this would need to be a non municipal use permit. So that form, you could either do it in retroactively or, you know, however the board feels comfortable. But I think it definitely has to, to take place because we are putting it on village property.
So, sorry, Lily, I didn't mean to jump on you there. Um, I, I'd be in favor of voting on it and then, you know, red, pending, filling out the actual form.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I hear what you're saying. I mean, I think this is, it's a nice idea and it's a little pilot and, you know, just for the remainder of the season through the Lunar New Year. You know, yes, Dorothea.
This is Jeff. Can I jump in?
Yes, that's what I was trying to do, Jeff.
So, I mean, it would be very easy if they just donated this stuff to us for this pilot project. And then we can just put it there. And then it's our baby and for this pilot project, you know, we can straighten signs or whatever it is that we want to do. Uh, anybody driving by from the village and sees something that needs to be cleaned up, they can do it. But it's like the, uh, the flag that we accepted a donation. If we accept the donation of these. If we accept the donation of these items, then we don't have to worry about a non municipal use permit, we can just do it.
So Therese, you know, in other words, you would, you know, basically this evening donate the items to the village. We would then vote on accepting or not, you know, that would be the vote. So, you know, to move forward with the pilot without belaboring, you know, a non municipal use permit, you know, going through that whole process, it's a little bit cleaner, I think, the way Jeff described it.
Okay, okay.
So that's a yes?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. Jeff, what was that?
Dorothea has her hand up.
Yes, oh, I see, I can't see her on the screen.
No, we realize.
Would you be able to stop the screen sharing so I can see everybody? Because I'm recognizing people, I can't see.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Okay, I have a public comment real quick. Technically, sign comments would be required for each code, by the code for each sign on each property by each property owner, if the on public plans correct. This is our peers. I think these type of signs are free speech if I'm not wrong, but I leave that to the reins.
Again, if it's ours, it's not a problem. We accept the donation, it's, it's not a problem.
Right, but is that speaking to signs in people's yards?
I think if it was in people's yards, and these go to, my understanding with the little stigma, you know, signs put in that they can display that because it's their view.
Free speech.
Free speech is my understanding for that type of sign, that little.
My point is, we don't even have to get into that if we accept the donation.
Correct.
It would just be a done deal.
Is there any other comments so we can?
Nope.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the donation of the items for the season of light for the pilot program at the four corners through, what was the date, Therese?
Yeah, can you hear me? I'm sorry. Lunar New Year.
Through the end of the Lunar New Year.
Yeah, and I, I'm sorry, I don't have that written.
Was it the 24th?
I want to say it was, but.
We'll just say through the end of the Lunar New Year.
Okay.
How's that? Okay.
Bible second.
Okay, roll call please.
Okay, trustee Stetser?
Hi.
Trustee Lightken?
Hi.
Trustee Keating?
Hi.
Trustee Lanthir?
Hi.
Mayor Plummer?
Plummer, I.
Motion passes.
Therese, really, thank you very much. I'm sorry, there was a lot of red tape we had to get through for a simple ask. And it's, yeah, it's no indication of any lack of support. It's, it's a wonderful thing you're doing, and we really appreciate it, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The Lunar New Year, by the way, is February 1st. But if, when does the menorah and the tree come down, I guess, is the other question.
Oh, Zach. Yeah.
That's up to the board, really, but typically just after the first of the year is when we take down decorations and the tree.
Okay. Jeff, were you saying something? Yeah, okay, just moving. Oh, Justin, is your hand up? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I may very well have missed it, but did we waive any 45 day requirement?
We don't need a permit because they donated the.
I got you. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so it was sort of a cleaner transaction, just if they donated it for this pilot. So that's what happened. Okay, well, yeah, thanks, thanks, Therese, and thanks to everybody who was working on this project.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry, we didn't have that paperwork to you earlier, but that would have made it a little easier. But I really appreciate your time and willingness to just try this out and see how it goes.
Okay, Zach has his hand up, and he may want to do some coordinating with you.
Okay.
Yep, Zach?
I was just curious if Therese was going to be putting the sign and the lanterns up.
So my, my understanding was I donate it to, to the village, and you do that, or no? Is that?
Yeah, yes, yes, yes.
Yep, yep.
So we'll coordinate with you, though, okay? And we'll set that up after the meeting with Zach.
Sounds great.
Okay, thanks, thanks so much.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Have a good evening.
Word about two hours, what would you say for a five minute break or something?
That sounds good.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion to, it's 8:26, how about 10 minutes, five minutes, what do you want?
Five seconds.
Five's good, I'll make a motion for a five minute.
Lilly, I'm seeing Lilly's fingers or.
I have a question.
Okay.
May we go back on the agenda and to item number three that we skipped over?
Oh, we're going to go back up after the break, yeah.
Perfect, okay, great.
Yeah, we're going to go right back up.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion, there's a motion for five is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I'll second.
Roll call. Okay, roll call trustee Stetser?
Hi.
Like trustee Lightken?
Hi.
Trustee Lanthir?
Hi.
Trustee Keating?
Hi.
Mayor Plummer?
Hi.
Motion passes. Five minute break.
Oh, maybe people permanently left. Oh, there, there's Renee.
They're coming back.
They're coming back.
Couldn't make it to my car fast enough. The mayor tackled me.
I did, I dragged you back in. Okay. We're back. Okay, we have everybody. Is there a motion to return to the meeting?
I'll make a motion. I'll second Dan's, so moved.
Okay, roll call.
Okay, roll call trustee Stetser?
Hi.
Trustee Keating?
Hi.
Trustee Lanthir?
Lanthir, I.
Trustee Lightken? Trustee Lightken?
Oh, there is.
Sorry, I'm still on mute, hi.
Mayor Plummer?
I.
Motion passed.
Okay, yeah, as Lilly requested, we'll go up to item number three, the code of conduct for officers of all boards. This was, and Dorothea, you can chime in, this, this was, draft was written up by our labor attorney.
Yes.
And you all have a copy of this.
And I believe Jeff also worked on it as well.
Yes, that's right, I did, yeah. So thank you, Jeff, for that. Is there any discussion? Oh, yes, Lilly, yes.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Yes, I was reading the minutes, and I tried to find where the board had directed the attorney to draft this new code of conduct. And I couldn't find that. Where, where the board voted to direct the attorney to draft. Could Jeff elaborate about that?
It's in the, it's in the minutes. I mean, we voted to do that.
No, I didn't see it in the minutes.
It's on the video, maybe, I don't know.
It wasn't on the video because I watched the video as well.
Hang on.
I'll check your mute, please.
You want me to address that?
Yes, please.
I mean, I think it happened in executive session, which is perfectly appropriate. There is no law, rule, or regulation that says directions to an attorney must be given in a public meeting. I've taken direction from the mayor alone in the past, I've taken direction from a request from a board member, I've taken direction by email. There's no regulation about how and when I must take direction.
Okay, so you were directed by the board, is what I'm hearing from you, to draft the code. I was wondering what, what precipitated, what, what was driving this new code. Speaking generally, from what I have read of it so far, and I've been trying to digest it, there's a lot to digest here. I found it, I'm going to try to find a word. Quite heavy handed, and there was a lot there that I have questions about. And the other part is that it affects the other boards. And I would like to suggest that the trustees send the, a copy of this draft to the other boards out of, as a courtesy, so that we might hear back from them because it does affect them as well before we begin any discussion on, on, on the code, new code of conduct.
Well, it is, it is a matter of public record, it's already posted. It's part of the package.
I understand, and I understand that, but with all due respect, it affects these boards as well. And I think that I, previously when we've had anything that affects our other boards, we've shown them the courtesy of requesting their input. So I would like, in this case as well, to request their input. And then once we receive it, to then have our discussion regarding this document.
Thank you. Yes, Justin.
I agree with trustee Lanthir's comments, and I also think that's a reasonable thing to do, to send this document to the other boards and give them time to respond. I do know that the PZBA, for which I'm the liaison, is not meeting until tomorrow. So they would not have had time to deliberate this as a public group yet. So I don't think that it's reasonable, since this is binding on them, to impose it on them without giving them a fair chance to comment. I think that, while it may be appropriate for the board to give direction to the attorney in an executive session, I think that overall as a practice, especially if it's something that leads to a public document, these things don't exist in a vacuum to me, and I think that the public should be able to understand where this is coming from. And so with, with that in mind, I'd like to carry on trustee Lanthir's chain of questioning here and ask Mr. Turner if this is based on, to your knowledge, a boilerplate document? Is this something that we copied and pasted based on best practices of other boards? Or is this something that is custom?
I would take all of the above. Christian Cassini, the labor attorney drafted it.
Okay, well, if it is all of the above, so that we may consider it at a subsequent meeting, I would like to see the documents that were modified. What parts of this are based on template code of conducts for other boards? And what part is modified to our particular board? As a follow up question to that, I would like to know, did the attorneys working on this take direction from any particular board member? Or is this just based on our attorney's neutral understanding of best practices for code of conducts of boards? So if any board member would disclose conversations or things that they asked to be added to this document that our independent attorneys created, I would appreciate hearing about it.
First of all, no, I received, we received no input aside from the initial direction. I'm not certain why it is that you need whatever foundational documents this was based on. I'm not even certain that it was. But I'll follow up with Christian to see if there were any other foundational documents. Or you're free to email them yourself. This is, you're a member of the board, you have the right to contact council. So at least if there's, I'm not sure what, why that would be important, it is what it is. In terms, in terms of an openness, I generate, or lawyers generate documents, what clients do with them is entirely your business. In fact, it would be inappropriate for me to divulge publicly anything that I was given in an attorney client situation. I only do that at the direction of the board. So, I mean, there you have it.
Thank you for, for those clarifications. I also have serious concerns with this code of conduct, and I'm not sure how much time we, we want to spend on it, you know, taking this apart in this meeting. It could take quite a while, based on the comments that I have. I feel like it is overall an attempt to legislate and control the, the speech of board members. Essentially, what this says is that it's an extension of our village ethics code. Essentially, what this says is that it's an extension of our village ethics code. It has some, it has several guidelines, most of which are very vague, in which I have trouble understanding exactly what would fall within the realm of acceptable speech and what would not. And it seems then that this is considered a violation of the ethics code, which is then to be sent to the Board of Ethics to, to be decided whether or not this is a violation. I think that that's really something that could ultimately scare members of this board from speaking, and I'm very concerned about the, the, the way that this code of conduct is, is written, in, in that it might have that, that kind of an effect on, on our speech. I also have the concern about the, the binding of the independent boards. I'm not sure that we're able to, to bind the independent boards in this capacity, and I would like to hear their opinions on that as well. And another one of my concerns is the, the way that this changes the open meetings law classification of, of reasons to go into executive session. Specifically, New York State Open Meetings Law says that we have the right to enter into executive session for the reasons listed in OML Section 105.1. And the, the way that that's written is that that is a, something that is up to the discretion of the board. And the way that this is written, it's a requirement of us to enter into executive session for those reasons. It seems to imply that they are all de facto confidential. When, to me, the confidentiality is something that's conferred by other statutes. It's not necessarily something that, you know, we can say all these things are, are by default confidential. So those are, those are some of the concerns. Really quickly, we can go into all those in more detail. But I would prefer to postpone this, get input from other boards, and then maybe have a workshop session or other meeting dedicated to this topic in more depth.
Thank you, Justin. Dan.
Just real quick, Justin, you had, you had a lot of points there. Does it make sense to put it into a Google document and start bouncing these ideas around?
It, it may. There's, there's a lot there. I'm not sure, you know, I, I, there's honestly so much here that I have concerns about. I'm not sure that it's a great starting point. I would like to go back and talk about what we're trying to accomplish, and I think that, you know, these, these things don't exist in a vacuum, so what are, maybe just taking a step back, what, what are we trying to do here?
Actually, I have a question just, just before, you know, all of that, because I, I thought it was clear what we were trying to do, you know, based on that executive session, that we all agreed to direct the attorney to do this. Because you mentioned that you were concerned that this is an attempt to control the, the speech of village board members, and that would be a concern, and I'm wondering, you know, and I, I know where Dan's going with this too, you know, maybe in a Google doc, to, I'd like to know those, the areas where you feel that that is really evident in the document, you know, the attempt to control speech. I mean, I think that's, you know, that's a big deal.
It is, yeah. I, if you want to start screen sharing and going through this, we can certainly do it.
Well, I don't think we should do it tonight. I agree with you, you know, but I think, I think that's something, you know, you're, you're bringing up points that I think are, you know, pretty significant. So I think, rather than, you know, go into this document in that manner, you know, I think you've, we've had a discussion, and maybe other board members want to weigh in too. If you want to give this to the rest of the boards, and you all want to write up comments, and maybe schedule, schedule it for another time. It's, it's too, it's going to be based on everything you're saying. I think it's going to take up too much time this evening, and we do have other agenda items. So what action would you all like to take as a board to move on and address these issues? Lily?
I, I do agree with, with what you're proposing, Mayor Plummer, and I, I have to ask Jeff now another question regarding conversations which took place in executive session, which have been brought to before the public this evening. Does that then mean that you could elaborate upon, since it was introduced in, in public, the fact that this document, what was initiated in, in executive session? Does that then put it in the realm of public discussion? Am I making that myself clear? In other words, executive session is by its nature privileged conversation. But the fact that it was introduced by you this evening in the public realm, in other words, you, you clarified that this document was initiated in executive session. I'm asking these questions because I was not present. And so when I went back and watched the video for the, of the meeting that I missed, I did not see any reference to this because, so I have, if I'm flying blind here, I have no idea what precipitated it, what was driving it, why we would need an extra code of conduct on top of what already exists both on the state and village level currently. So I'm trying to get information, and you have indicated that it was discussed in executive session. Does that then allow?
We have a phone call with our attorney, so he could share what happened in the session with you.
Okay, well, I'm asking if it's been introduced in public, I do believe that that then puts it in the public realm. I'm just clarifying that with Jeff.
So I disclosed that I was given direction
Yeah.
in executive session. I didn't disclose anything that happened in executive session. If the board wants to disclose what happened in an executive session, it may do so, which sort of proves the point of one of the purposes of this code of conduct. However, I was given the direction. I did not foster a need for it. Well, that's probably not true. I, I'm really not comfortable talking about executive session.
Lily, why, why wouldn't you just pick up the phone and call Jeff and have this conversation so he can share the information with you as a trustee, as an elected official?
I think the reason I brought it up is because I have, within my understanding, having sat on this board for over 10 years, that if a subject that has, was discussed in executive session is brought, discussed in front of the public, that then puts it in the public realm, even though, and so I asked Jeff the question, if it was brought before the public this evening that this occurred in executive session, does that then open it up for discussion in front of the public? That was my question.
And I believe he answered that. I understood what Jeff, Jeff said, you know, in his response to you.
I heard it and I accepted it. I did not, I did not.
I'm just saying, if you want additional information about it, you certainly.
Oh, I certainly would do that, of course. I will now.
Yeah, no, that would be great. Yes. Yes, Justin.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, to bring this back to the, the discussion about this being brought up in executive session, and, and to me, when I think back to the, the five or so categories of things in executive session, talking about a new code of conduct is not one of those. You know, there's performance of a specific employee and, and all those kinds of things. And so to me, this would not qualify as something that is legitimately done in, in executive session. And I, I think the public should know about that. They should know that these things don't exist in a vacuum, and, and we should be able to give a justification before we produce a new code for, for the members of our boards.
Thank you. Thank you for your opinion on that. I'm going to recognize Jeff and then Dan.
So we went into executive session to discuss a specific employee. During that executive session, in the discussion about that specific employee, I was given direction by the board to do law work. Rather, my part, law partner was given direction to do that work. That is all I've said about what happened that executive session, and that is what happened in the executive session. So once the work product has been developed and distributed to the Board of Trustees, it is theirs to do with as they see fit. That's not a law question. That's a public policy Board of Trustee question. In those discussions, I am assuming that there will be covered any reasons why this, in a general way, why this, or why the attorney or attorneys were asked to develop this code of conduct. Therefore, it will not exist in a vacuum.
Okay, thank you. And Dan?
Thanks, Jeff. I, that helps a lot. The other thing I want to note for the public is that, if you recall, and everybody will recall this, but Lily, because she wasn't there. During that public, I'm sorry, during that executive session, we had a lot of talk of, okay, what's the right procedure here? What needs to be done in public? How do we need to go back into the meeting? What do we need to vote on in public and those kinds of things? This was handled very responsibly, with, with a focus on what should be done properly.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, so, oh, yes, Dorothea, and then, you know, we're going to move forward because we, clearly, there's larger issues that are being raised, and so we just want to create an action item moving forward.
Understand, I have public comment.
Okay.
For you.
And then we'll move on.
Yep. Okay, from Art Pierce, he says, could you again provide a brief of the matter at hand in it? As I have been cut off, also believe, believe the public should have, also have a right to the supporting documents behind the matter. Can specifics be provided to what speech is being limited or denied? And why cannot there be a more detailed discussion during a public meeting on an item listed on published agenda?
Okay, thank you.
And I have a comment from Peggy Carabares. She said, please provide some background for the public and the reasons for it being created, the authorship, the input from the board, which just the board treat this as a draft and make it less punitive.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, so I think we should need to create an action item about how we move forward, and some, some things were raised. Anybody have any thoughts on that about moving forward with this? Yes, Lily?
Yes, I, I would prefer to have a, have it at another meeting, obviously, where the agenda is not so packed. And it may be even set a special meeting, though I'm beginning to hate that word, a special meeting for it, where we have input from the boards, either by email or a position letter from them. They might each have their own position and not want to give us a position as a board because it affects each one of them individually. I'd like to hear from, from all of them, and so I think it deserves its own, own meeting and its own time.
Okay.
Workshop?
Yeah, I guess like sort of a workshop format, and then we also, you know, with the holidays and stuff, so if we're distributing this, we have to really give people some time. You know, to be able to look at it as boards, so.
I mean, I have a clarification on the word workshop, because previously I understood that workshop would not include public input, and I would very much want to include public input.
Sorry, Lily. The way we had talked about this several times the last few was that they were just such big things that we had to go through, and we had to take a lot of time with them, and you couldn't fit them into the same kind of meeting like this one, where it's a 65-page packet, that it was dedicated for us to have a talk about that, and the last few that we did were entirely open to the public, and they solicited feedback from the public, and you were there. I'm sure you remember.
I do. It's just a different semantics. It's, it's just the way it was previously conducted. So I want to just make sure that this is its own meeting. Let's, let's call it its own meeting.
Okay, so let's do that, and I'm thinking, well, boy, we have a lot already coming up, starting in January. Renee, was your hand up?
I do before, yes, I have a couple of questions before we decide to put this in a, in a workshop and, and all of that. This was supposed to be a, a starting point of discussion, so I support what the rest of the board is saying about giving us some more time, putting, allowing the other boards, because this will affect them. I just want to be clear on what, before we move forward, what problem we're trying to solve with this? And is it going to be used for, you know, onboarding for every new elected official, for every new board member? Like, how will this go into practice? Are we adopting it as part of the code? Are we taking pieces of bits and pieces, pieces of it and trying to put it into our code of ethics? Sorry, that was a rambling list, but just providing a little guidance on the problem we're trying to solve.
Well, this was drafted as a policy going forward that would affect all board members. Am I correct, Jeff? Getting a nod. Okay.
And the purpose is to remind every, everyone who is elected and ever, much like
Yep, and you know what I could do, and I think this might help, and then we can move forward. The purpose is stated right up front in the first paragraph.
I see that.
Okay, so I think that states the intention of the policy and how it dovetails with the code of ethics in our handbook. You know, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it's online.
Yeah.
So, you know, a code of conduct helps us succeed by establishing expectations and boundaries. It's a guide to bring clarity and consistency to our relationship with each other and our staff. You know, I'm just picking up a few things. So, I mean, that, that was, I think, the intention. It's stated right up front in the purpose.
Okay, and is this something that the rest, that other villages do, just to
Oh, yeah, there's
other code of conduct? They are, okay, and we, we have a missing piece here, and so we're trying to provide a little bit of guidance for anyone who represents our village to conduct themselves in a civil manner, respectful manner, how we treat our staff, all of those types of things. I see Dorothea shaking her head.
Okay, so moving forward, anything else, Renee? I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. I just, it's, it's a big, it's a, there's a lot in the document. I know there's some things we can't talk about how we got here, and I, I just want to be clear about what we're, what we're trying to accomplish. That's all. And I know the intent is in there at the beginning, so stressing that as we go forward.
Okay, so I'm, I'm thinking then that probably it would be, we would distribute this document as a draft to our boards, so, you know, Dorothea. Oh, Justin, I'm sorry, your hands up, yeah?
Oh, that's no problem. I, I really appreciate trustee Stetser's comments, and I think that for me, what, what I would feel comfortable with is, is not even a workshop meeting where we go over the document, but going into some of those questions, you know, how, if, if this focus is on respectful treatment of, of staff, for example, something like that, then, you know, how, how do we best address that? Is that via an extension of our, of our legislation? Is it through something else entirely? I don't know. I, I think that what I would like to see is a couple of examples from other municipalities, and I would like to take a step back and say, okay, you know, these are the four goals we want to accomplish, and these are some ideas about how to, to get started. So I think that to me, it's a little bit premature to jump into a workshop on this specific document. I'd like to look at examples and, and lay out the four different principles that, that we'd like to, that we'd like to move forward before we spend time on, on a whole different meeting.
And how'd you come up with four principles?
I don't know, just trying to pick up rough. No, I, you know, there is
The idea of a framework of, of principles.
Yeah, right. So, you know, there, this seems like there's a confidentiality, there is conduct with employees and staff, are there, there's conduct with public. You know, if, if we kind of go back to those things, I, I don't know if an extension of the legislation is the best, is the best way to address all of those things.
Yeah, and this is a policy. This isn't codified. This is a policy. Yes, Dan?
So, you know, another example further, Justin, is also like, you know, board members not divulging what, what happened in attorney-client sessions or in, or in executive sessions that relate to employees, things like that. Just wanted to give another example.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so it sounds like maybe a little more research to be done, gathering a little more information, as you said, other municipalities. So why don't we, yes, Dorothea?
I'm sorry, Mayor Plummer, we have comments from Mr. Pierce, and it does sound like you're trying to wrap this up.
Yeah.
He's, he's asking for, yeah, I understand. He's asking for He's, he's asking for, yeah, I understand. He's asking for a response to his questions. And he wanted to display the policy online, but we're moving on. And he does have his hand raised, so I assume he wants to address the board. So I'm going to throw that all in your lap, because I don't want to answer these questions. Because if I answer them, it might not be what you want to do.
Well, I mean, I, I'm thinking, can he submit the questions, and then when we do the research and gather more information, we'll hopefully be able to respond. In better detail with what he's asking.
Okay.
And does he mean the policy that's in the packet? Because it's also.
I think that's what he was hoping I would display, but.
Okay.
It's, it's been posted.
Yeah, it's posted, it's in the packet, and, and Art, please, you know, put, list it, list your questions and. And direct them to Dorothea, so she can, you know, as we do this research. Moving forward, we can hopefully, you know, be more thorough in answering them.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, what I'm hearing is then, um, maybe, you know, Jeff, Christian. You and Christian, maybe a little more research, and Dorothea, how are other municipalities handling this? Um, you know, the more I think about it, I agree with you, Justin, it's too soon for a workshop. I think maybe we'd be headed towards that, but. Let's get a little more background and detail and figure out a better framework perhaps for this. Um, and so, you know, maybe we can, we'll do some research and, you know, put it on, on an upcoming agenda, you know, as we head into the new year. That type of thing. Okay, does that, does that work for the board? I mean, I think that's probably, at this point, you know, the most realistic way for us to. Move forward, knowing that we need, need a little bit more information.
Sounds good.
Okay, okay, I'm getting nods. All right. Okay, then we're going to move on. And let's see, where are we here? Uh, oh, why don't we do items one and, one and two kind of go together a little bit? Um, and this is just really more sort of, you know, where, where we are and where we're going. Uh, one is, the first one is South Street and the Wood Street Project, uh, Engineering, and this is, um. Just to, uh, bring this back to the board, you know, we did receive that one hundred thousand dollar grant, uh, from Senator Brooks' office. Uh, for sidewalks, uh, to be brought up to code and with proper ADA compliance on South Street. So, um, what we, I'd like to bring back to the board tonight is just to authorize Scott Harder to proceed. Um, with putting together that package, you know, for the bids, um, because we're going to have to have three bids. Because of the nature of the project, um, to just start in on that. Um, yes, Dan?
Um, sounds really reasonable. My only question is, have we done that before? Um, i- it seems we've been down this path a few times on South. Does one exist already?
Well, Zach can speak to that too, because I know, yeah, he's been very involved in this, Zach.
Uh, yes, we have, we, we met with Fisher Associates a couple of years ago. Um, just for preliminary discussions about, um, what we were looking to do on the road. Um, without any clear direction, um, so what has been done, but still needs to be done. Um, and we just didn't sign on anything with Fisher Associates at that point. I think they did, um, produce a quote for their services, and that's where I ended.
That was just for the engineering, am I correct?
Correct.
There's nothing else other than straight up engineering.
So the, the twenty-five thousand dollars, I believe, is what we were using, uh, as a benchmark for engineering costs.
Right.
Okay, just, just wondering whether we could leverage some of that existing work rather than having to pay for it again, but you'll use your best judgment, I'm sure.
Yeah.
No, I, I, yeah, oh, hang on one second. We are, we are going to be using that for the engineering. We're, we're using that, but what we need Scott Harder to do is, um, help us put together the whole package to bid. Am I correct, Zach?
Yeah.
Please.
Per the, per the procurement policy, we cannot just outright hire Fisher Associates to do the work. It has to go out to bed. Um, just to, to follow that policy.
So we need three bids. Yes, Lily?
Thank you. Um, yes, do we have an estimate? Scott give us an estimate for this work? That he's proposing to do to get us to the point where we can put out the procurement policy?
No, not yet. We still have some design, uh, features that we need to sort out first, and how complicated or complex this project's going to be. Um, which is going to determine, um, a lot of the pricing that goes along with it.
It isn't, haven't we, in the past, haven't we had Scott give us an estimate, and then the board approves the expenditure for him to move forward? To give us, to give us a quote? Usually he says, this is how much it's going to cost, and we say, yes, that's.
I see where you're going with that. We'll have him provide the estimate, but there's a few, there's a lot of moving parts, because I know. Zach, at one point you said, he, you know, he had mentioned drilling core samples at different points. On South Street. That was the first I'd heard of that. In other words, I think it's, you know, it's been a little while since. Things have moved, so.
So with the addition of Wood Street on top of South Street. There's, there's another added cost that goes along with that, and depending on what we end up doing with, um, the Gabians that are failing at. Um, Rain Creek Fountain South, um, that may, that may be included in this project as well. So these are some of the things that have to be determined before we can actually get.
Okay, so why don't we do this then? Um, why don't we have Scott? Um, put together a bid, sort of stepping it with adding in wood, adding in possibilities of, of looking at. That intersection of Fountain and South as well, so it's not just looking at the sidewalks.
Yeah, that's, I think the last time that we had met with Scott, we were discussing five things at once. Um, maybe speaking up with Scott, it could be just solely around this project and moving forward. And seeing if we can't determine a cost for his, um, his services to put a bid package together for. The work that we're looking to have.
Yeah, because it's a big project. It's beyond his, his scope in terms of actually overseeing the project, I believe.
Yeah.
So that's, you know, that was another component of him just helping us facilitate getting the bids out. So we'll circle back with him, but there's another aspect to this project, and, um, this is something Dorothea can chime in on as well. Um, and it also speaks to, um, before we get into it, it's just about, um, you know, we have to pay upfront. Uh, front the money for the one hundred thousand dollars, uh, to get this project done, and then we are reimbursed. You know, that's typically how grants from the state work. So, um, and it, it also speaks to the grant funding, which is item number two. I'm going to combine them right now, because it's sort of all part of this discussion. Um, there was a grant received a number of years ago for one hundred thousand dollars to. Um, redo that rear entrance, uh, to Village Hall that goes into the Legion in the basement. And, um, it, it won't necessarily bring it up to ADA compliance, but it will be a tremendous, uh, boost for safety. For how that exit is, uh, used, uh, from the building. And Dorothy, I know you could probably speak to it a little bit more specifically, because that sort of wasn't, you know, when I was here. Um, and that is a one hundred thousand dollar grant as well. So now we have two one hundred thousand dollar grants. Uh, we want to do, do these projects. We have to front the money, and then we will be reimbursed. So Dorothea and I met, and we had mentioned this, uh, the last meeting, I believe. We met with our financial advisors about how to proceed with a ban, which is a short-term bond. Um, to help us, uh, procure the money through bonding. Uh, facilitate the project and then be reimbursed, because as we know, we're not reimbursed necessarily right away. Typically, it's maybe eighteen to twenty-four months out to receive the funds back. And then what we would do when we are reimbursed. We would simply pay off that, that bond. So, um, essentially, it's really a grant-driven process to do this, because this is how we can get these projects done. And it's short-term bonding. Um, Dorothy, you may want to add to that, because you've, you've been through this, this process before.
Yes, which, what the grant, or grant, the grants are giving us their, these are monies available to do these projects. As the board knows, we've been working diligently to try to restore fund balance and not wanting to complete these, the fund balance to. Move forward with these projects. We have to find an alternative financing method so we can complete it, get them done. Um, what our financial advisors are going to, are going reviewing is our current debt load. Look at the projects, how they would come into play, how we would finance them, financing the whole project. So let's say we're looking at South, and we're looking at the whole road reconstruction. We would look at how we're going to try to pay that ban off, let's say, in two years. So when we have the dormitory money. Uh, we use chips, we use budget money. It's just a tool to, to get to where we want to be. So it's short-term financing, we're paying interest on it. I'd rather pay interest of. You know, five thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, than lose a hundred thousand and not get the project done. So what we have spoken to the financial advisors is to actually come in and meet with the board. And explain how we're looking to utilize all this to finish these projects. The project for the rear entrance, we actually thought we lost that grant, because we weren't a, able to move forward. So in looking at other projects dealing with the Village Hall, which we're hoping to get more information on that impact. It is a good time if we can do both together, because it would save construction cost as well. Um, to put it, tie it all together. So I reached out to the dormitory, the grant is still there. And they're willing to let me extend it and get it on, and get it done, but we need to get it done. And we're not in the position to put out the money to do it. So we need to use the tools available to us. Every municipality does this. It's short-term. As long as it's not going to impact our debt load and we're going to be okay. I don't see a reason why to turn out, turn down this opportunity. So we, as me and the mayor spoke to them, we are looking to bring them to the board, so you can ask your questions. Then if everything's good, we move forward, we move to our bonding council. And we go from there. So it's a pretty straightforward process. It's just getting the pieces in line. With the board, so you understand both projects, how they're going to impact, what we're going to do through budget, what we're going to do through financing. So, there you go.
And, and we can also set up, um, you know, this was the, the feedback, um, and they have very positive feedback from our financial advisors. And as I said, as Dorothea said, they're putting a package together to present to the board and talk through the process with us, uh, which will be in January. Um, but, you know, they, um. There's an, uh, an opportunity where, what is it, for the first year, we do, do not pay any interest. And then if we get, get the reimbursement at the end of the second year, we get our funds back. Then we just simply pay it all down. So we're not even paying interest potentially in the first year for the bond.
I'm sorry, I'm going to correct you, Mayor Plummer. You would pay interest, you don't have to make payment.
That's what I meant, to pay interest.
No, no, you would pay the interest amount, but you're able to roll that ban over for a second year, and you're only paying the interest, so.
It's only interest, which is.
It's only interest.
Yeah.
And then.
You're right.
The plant, the plan would be by twenty-four months, we should have the money back from the dormitory, child's funding, whatever we're using to pay off the ban completely.
Yeah. Yeah, because, yeah, so, um, that's sort of the, the Cliff's, Cliff's Notes of it. Um, but they will, you know, be able to provide the information in greater detail, uh, come January, and we'll schedule them then. Uh, Justin, did you have your hand up?
Uh, yeah, thank you for the work on, on researching this, and, and I'm glad to hear that we didn't lose the, uh, the grant for the, the back of Village Hall. Um, and i- it also sounds, uh, initially to me like a, a good idea to pursue these options and, and look at them. Um, in order to, uh, be able to utilize the grants, if, if that's what we need to do. Um, my, my question was just, uh, this project, I don't have any details about the project in the back of Village Hall. Was it, did it go through HPP approvals? Um, and do we need to do that before we secure funding for it?
I, if I can answer, the project started, we did speak to Barrow engineers who have done work on the building before. I would say the project was ready to go to bid, but we didn't have the financing to move forward. Um, if we move forward, absolutely, we need to go in front of the HBB, because. If the entrance we're talking about is the emergency exit on the back corner. And I would point out to the board that the Legion uses that in the better weather time. I'm terrified one of them is going to fall. Um, Steve has told them, we really don't want them to use it unless it's absolutely emergency, especially this time of year. They should not be using it, and Zach, you can speak to the entrance. It is crumbling, the steps are crumbling. It is a detriment, and it should be repaired and be done appropriately. The plans, you know, obviously, when we have, I get the newer plans, and as we look at the full project, you've presented to the board. We present it to HB, and we get the appropriate approvals before moving forward.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other comments before we move on? It's just to kind of let you know what's, what's going on, yes?
Did I miss, did we need to vote on Scott Harder?
Well, we're going to get more information from Scott, because actually, you know, Zach's right, the scope of the project has changed. Because we have added in Wood Street, and there is the potential for, you know, looking at that fountain intersection as well, so. We need to circle back with Scott.
Correct, and I think those bid documents really for him are to tell us the pieces that need to be in the bid documents. So we get the appropriate engineering for the full project. So we would include everything we wanted reviewed by the engineers.
And we would be using what's already been budgeted for the engineering, Dan. Okay, all right, so we're going to move on. Uh, let's see, we did one, two, three, where are we? Oh, item ten, uh, the naming of the DPW equipment. Oh, Jeff?
Do you want me to stick around for the rest of these? It doesn't really look like there's much law work here, but I'll stay if you want.
I think we're good. Anybody? I think we're good.
Happy to stay if you want, but I don't see.
No, I think we're good.
All right.
Yeah. Thanks, Jeff.
Everybody have a good night.
You too. Thank you so much.
Yeah, all right, bye-bye.
Okay, back to item number ten, Dan?
Yeah, so the naming of the DPW equipment, I sent an email about this, uh, just wanted to get everybody's temperature for whether they wanted to do something like this.
I had one kooky idea that would tie into our walkability and, um, naming the, the, um. The piece of equipment that does our plowing for the sidewalks.
Great.
Wait, are there two, Zach? There are two of them, right?
Yeah, you guys don't like tool cat?
We could, okay, I don't know. I don't know that we need to do this, but that was the first thing that came to mind, because they're so. Yeah, they're just.
They're like little R2-D2s.
They're, and they're my favorite thing. It's the whole reason we moved here. There are other reasons, but.
We have our own little nicknames for the sidewalk plows, but yes, we are open to ideas.
I think it was a contest idea, right?
Yeah, so Zach, you weren't copied on this, I'm sorry. It was just an idea to have, open it up to a contest, open to kids. To engage them and, uh, have them able to, uh, vote on the snowplow, and there goes Plowie McPlow face. And it's a lot of fun, and it gets people engaged, and, um, it would just be fun.
You know.
Oh, go ahead, Zach, go ahead.
You know that it probably would end up being Plowie McPlow.
It might be.
And then what, what, so just talk, talk us through this, Dan, so.
Yeah, so.
Be a winner, you know.
So there would be a winner, and the idea was also that you guys would help pick that winner.
Okay.
And then it would be painted on the side.
Okay, I see. Yeah, it's a little like.
With flames.
Yeah, I, that's good that you pointed out painting it on the side. So I think I would, I would like to know. I know this, how much it would cost to paint it on the side? Because when we had our decals put on before, it was not an inexpensive venture. So I kind of like to know how much that is to paint it on the side. I would also like to know who's choosing the winner. I would also like to know how you would run the contest. If you could have those, uh, you know, more fleshed out. Uh, so that we can actually, you know, get behind it and say, yes, and Dan is going to run the contest, and he's going to put it on social media. And he's going to decide the winner, and, oh, who's going to decide?
I, I'm not deciding the winner. It says in the email, so, um, I'll, I'll put together a more fleshed out plan. It, it seems that in general, might be an idea we might pursue, who knows?
Okay. Okay, that'd be great to have more information.
Yeah, let's plant the seed about, um, you know, really giving focus to pieces of equipment that keep our sidewalks clear. Rather than the one that keeps the, you know, the roads are important too, but no, I'm kidding. Whatever, whatever you come, I look forward to hearing whatever you come up with, Dan.
Something fun. Okay, great. So that's the action item. Dan's going to flush things out and.
Zach, you're not painting anything right now, don't worry. You're like.
I'm not sure we have any painters in, in the house. Not any good.
All right, um, okay, so next, next up, uh, municipal composting. Yes.
Thank you. We've, we've had this on the agenda for a few meetings already, and we just had a, a workshop on composting. So I'll try to be, uh, very brief, but happy to go into details if anybody has questions or suggestions. Um, I believe that based on the workshop and composting, one of the options that, uh, seemed acceptable to the, uh, the group, or at least that the group had some interest in. Um, was a, a small, uh, tote for composting that we would have at Village. for composting that we would have at village hall. So this would be something that would give us points towards being a, a climate smart community. Um, the smallest tote option listed in impact earth in the, um, packets, uh, that we've distributed previously, uh, had a cost of ten dollars per swap and that was a, a thirty-two gallon. So it's smaller than the, the standard, um, garbage totes that most people use in the village. Um, I'm, I'm thinking that this would allow us to keep the cost under around twenty dollars a month. Uh, with, with some amount allowed for, for taxes and maybe less as we're ramping up and we don't need, um, swaps out every couple of weeks. So um, that's the, uh, the basic proposal. It's, it's around twenty dollars a month. Um, uh, with a little bit of offer on there and we would be able to explore municipal composting, get points towards being a climate smart community. Um, and hopefully educate the public a bit on some of the options as well as, as we grow and learn. Um, one other option that we did talk briefly about is a bucket, um, a five gallon bucket like some people have at home. Um, those tend to fill up very quickly and, uh, that's specifically listed as a residential option. Um, and so I, I didn't pursue it, but I, I just felt like the, uh, the smallest tote, um, was better and, uh, similar in price since the, the buckets were fifteen bucks a month, I think. Um, so that, that was the, uh, the proposal that I mentioned and happy to, um, hear any, any comments, questions about that.
No, thanks. Thanks for doing this and thanks for researching this. I know, Dorothea, yeah.
And just real quick, wanted to say I did speak to the American Legion. They said they would utilize it if it was made available.
Yep.
Great. That's wonderful. Yeah. One, one thing that we might want to talk about is with, uh, impact earth when we initially sign up. Um, it is important that the waste that goes into the compost tote, um, is, uh, separate from other things that are not compostable. So that it can actually be used effectively. So, uh, I'm not sure if impact earth would be willing to send somebody over maybe for an initial meeting if, if they would be interested in that as well. Um, you know, certainly don't want to impose things on them, but, uh, they may have some ability, uh, when we're starting out to be able to give us direction on how to properly, um, you know, make sure the things that we're put, putting in are able to be composted effectively.
That'd be great.
But thank you, Dorothea, for talking with them. I appreciate it.
That'd be good.
Um, so, uh, I, I will make a motion then, uh, to begin municipal composting, uh, by the procurement of one small thirty-two gallon tote, uh, to be used at village hall that would be swapped at a cost of ten dollars a month, uh, from impact earth.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Lampier.
Lampier, I.
Trustee Stetser.
I.
Trustee Keating.
I.
Trustee Lightkin.
I.
Mayor Plummer.
I.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Justin. This is great. Really appreciate it. Okay, uh, next up, project plan for treasurer training. And Dorothea, you may want to chime in on this too.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my brain is We've been, I know Mary has been out of the office last couple of weeks in and out. She's not really here full time. I mean, it's not even ten hours. We haven't seen her because of, you know, her schedule and the holidays. Um, but she has been work, working with Brooklyn. They've been going over a number of items. They're moving forward. As my understanding, they're working on closing out months and working on getting ready for the budget. And I believe Brooklyn can comment to that as well, that that is the current state. Um, Brooklyn and I did have some training today with our current software package with Williamson Law Book going over the financials and happily, a lot of the things he was going over, Brooklyn has seen and is moving forward. There's some items we can utilize to assist Brooklyn and myself in looking at the software package. So I think we are looking at the end game here. We are getting to the final round.
So, w- maybe when Mary comes back, uh, we, we should sit down with her and actually create sort of like a the last sort of outline of what is remaining and what that timeframe is.
Sure.
And then let's bring that back to the board. And I'm glad though that, um, you all had that training with the software. Um, I, I think, you know, Brooklyn, maybe you can speak to that a little bit. I know, um, they're, they're going to be coming back as needed, I believe.
Yes, and there's a lot of things that we learned from them with the budgeting program. And this is something I'm sure Dan and Justin will be happy to hear. One of the problems we have had is not being able to do a five-year look back to see where, what our, you know, line item has done and to project. They're hoping that the changes they're looking to make and coming up is that five-year look back plus a five-year looking forward. So they're hoping to implement that within the software. So that would be reports that we would be able to provide to the board during budget times to assist. So, and I know that has been something essential and some other tips they gave us that I'm hoping to pull in and you help Brooklyn use and both of us work together to provide you current numbers as well through developing the Excel spreadsheets. I know you were looking forward, Dan. That was something I did ask specifically about how we can bring the current data into doing that. And there is a way to doing it. So it, it was really a, a good meeting this morning that we went through.
To, thanks, Dorothy. Uh, and Brooklyn's doing great. To, um, to Mayor Plummer's point, what we're really looking for is a project plan. The, the verbal update is terrific and, and very much appreciated. Really looking for that punch list. The following things need to be done by the following dates. Here's who's responsible for them. Here's, you know, what could get in the way, all, all that good stuff so that we can execute well. That's really the thing we're most looking for. But thank you for the update.
Okay, we are working on that. That unfortunately is not something I have been able to hit the ground running with right now. You know, running for boards for you. So, and Mary being, being in and out. So we So yeah, we will get her nailed down and getting the what is left for Brooklyn to be trained with. So we are moving forward.
I am still here. I do, I do stay through the meetings. Um, but just to speak on that, um, something Mary and I are going to be working on is pretty much just a guide, but a treasurer's guide. Something writ, written that displays the treasurer's responsibilities, what we do on a daily, weekly, monthly and yearly basis. So moving forward, you know, not saying anything's going to happen to me, but as Dorothea likes to say, if someone gets hit by the bus, you know, we want to have something to lay for the next treasurer or someone else that can, you know, come in and fill shoes. So we just want to kind of have a blueprint of what the treasurer is responsible for the village of Pittsburgh. So that's something we're going to work on together. And then once we do that, we'll analyze what I've done and what we still need to do in a full responsibility list for the treasurer.
That's terrific. Thanks, Brooklyn. And we use the phrase, um, in case someone wins the lottery, not in case the one gets hit by the bus. It's much
That's kind of upbeat.
Yeah.
Yeah. Plus the RTS drivers are very well trained. They would not be the ones. It's those speedies, Mick Speedenstein's that are more likely to, okay, I like your, your idea. Yeah.
Bus drivers bounce off of light poles.
Okay. Before the bus does hit me, I, I think we're good to move on.
Yep, we are. We are.
I'm feeling the lights on the back of my head.
I know. This is great. Okay. So, uh, item number thirteen. Um, update on non-vaccinated office staff compliance with the COVID testing policy.
Yeah. So that was, that was my agenda item. It was just, we put this in place in October and really haven't heard anything since and just hoping that the policy is being followed on a weekly, the policy said weekly testing for, for those who are not vaccinated. Just wanted to make sure that's happening. Has there been any, um, challenges executing on that? And those kinds of things. So just looking for an update there.
Yeah, we can speak to that. Yep.
Dorothea show. Um, yes, no, sorry. Um, no. The members of the staff that are not vaccinated have been providing me weekly. They text me over a picture of their test along with the date. And we, I sign it, put it into their record. We've been doing great with that. Um, unfortunately, in the overall front with the COVID, with the pandemic, we have had several scares. Um, as the board has seen in my expenses, I've had to purchase test kits. We have tried to get them from the county. Not the county, the state. We have an order with the state and it's just not getting filled yet and I'm waiting. Um, so we're picking them up. And when we do have a scare, we've had employees being very responsible. If they don't feel good, they call us. If there's been any, you know, implication that another employee was around that person, they're giving a test kit. And we've been very lucky with having the negative tests. So it's been working all the steps we have put in place. We have sadly only had, I won't say sadly, I feel sadly for that person. We only had one person that did come down with COVID. And they isolated appropriately. People were tested and everybody was fine. So everything we have put in place is working in its best, it can, you know, so.
That's been really great. Everybody's been really, you know, stepping up. Yes, Lily.
Thank you. Um, I know the town received a number of free tests, but will they be sharing them with us? Would they give some to the office, for instance?
Yeah, I spoke with, with Bill and the, the short answer is no. Um, yeah, what the town, um, has intended to do with the test would be to distribute them. I think, you know, there's like a little COVID, uh, test center and also where you can get shots down in, in Pittsburgh Plaza. And so the last I spoke with Bill that they would just make those tests available to any resident, um, including villagers, uh, but not sharing them specifically with our municipality, you know, with us. So that's the long version of the short answer.
Okay. Yeah, I was excited. I was hoping we could maybe get some from county, state and no.
It's been tough. It's really been tough. Yeah.
It is.
I mean, I was just in Walgreens tonight. They've got a whole bunch of them.
Yeah. Yeah, actually, it, it, they're, they're pretty widely available now. You know, much, much better than it used to be. Yeah. Steve, did you have your hand up?
Well, you know, you answered it. It was the fact that like in Hamline, they're, they're having a thing this Saturday where if you're a resident, you can go pick up a free test. Each, each family can pick up one free test kit. And I didn't know if we were part of that. So you guys already answered.
The town of Pittsburgh is doing it this Saturday.
Yep.
And you have to show your ID. So same thing. Yeah, from the county.
Yep. So that's, that's where the, the tests are going. So that, that's the, the update. Did we answer everybody's questions about that?
Yeah, it did. And two, two shakes of a lamb's tail. Thank you.
Okay.
I don't even understand that.
Well, I don't know. Go ask the lamb. I don't know what to say. Okay. All right. Uh, let's see, anything else here? Uh, member items? Anybody? Okay, I have one very quick. Um, very exciting. Um, Susan, uh, Lotte and Joanne Shannon have been working on a welcome packet, uh, for the village. And, um, they intend to have it, you know, the first part of next year. I mean, you know, we have the holidays and all that. Um, they're sort of dubbing it the Pittsburgh Village Users Manual and they're going to be doing two versions. One is for, um, commercial uh, property owners and commercial, you know, businesses and the other is going to be for residents. And so um, it's going to be a little bit, I think, expanded from maybe what earlier, uh, or older, uh, packs have been. Uh, you know, but a brief history of the village, current profile of the village, demographics, those kinds of things, village hall directory. Um, a discussion, a narrative about our village governance, um, our relationship to the town, description of boards, um, application procedures when you want to do work on your house and how you go about that process and sort of the, the boards that are involved and all the parties that are involved. Um, they'll also include, um, information from historic Pittsburgh, the fact that homeowners can get a two-hour free consult through historic Pittsburgh about their historic property. Um, and they'll also receive what we call the blue sheet, which is a cut sheet, um, that we can print out from our historic inventory um, of each owner's property. Um, so it gives them the history of their property and the background of their property. And then Steve had a great idea. Steve, what was your idea to, um, include a self, yeah, speak to that. I, Susan told me at the last minute, so.
Yeah, I, I suggest that we had a postcard, uh, in there that will be sent back to the village hall with the, the new homeowner's information, you know, an email address, a contact information. So we, we have on file, uh, you know, the ability to get a hold of residents. Cause I, I truly have a problem with certain things, just like the mattress situation. You don't, you know, you
Right.
Cards, you're trying to get a hold of people, but you don't have contact info. So just a pre-addressed, you know, postcard they can fill out and send back into.
And they can check the box to sign up for bulletins and announcements and all that. So it'll be sort of, you know, the one-stop shopping for them. And it's already just set up and they just fill it out and throw it in the mail and we get it. So, but anyway, that, that was just an update. So, um, I think it's great. Yeah.
So I just had one member item and it's, it's the same one of encouraging all of our boards to sit down and work directly with seventy-five Monroe to solve that situation in the best possible way for the village.
Great, thank you. And I, I know that the planning and zoning board is, uh, meeting with, having a meeting with seventy-five Monroe tomorrow. Uh, and hosting it with public input and all of that. So I think that's good. That's moving forward. Okay, any other member items? No? Okay, um, hang on, I just lost my.
I do have one. Uh, I, I think I shot over an email about this. It was, um, about a, a resident stopping, about wanting to be on a traffic committee. Um, her name is no, no, it's Jerry, I'd say. I'll, I'll pull up her name.
Yeah. Can you send that to me? Cause I was in touch with somebody else from that area too. And I just want to make sure we're getting the coverage on that. Yeah.
At Jefferson Circle or one of those?
Okay. Yeah. Oh, I thought it was Marsha. Okay. Well, anyway, if, can we, can you, we connect after the meeting about that? Dan?
Yeah, sure.
Oh, okay, great.
I'm just looking for it now.
Okay.
Anyhow, okay.
Yep, um, we, I do want to make a motion to go in executive session, uh, for, um, what is, what is the citation one oh five? Oh, Dorothea, what?
Real quick, um, did we want to offer it up to public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So hey, yeah. Are there any additional public comments? I apologize. Anybody, Dorothea?
Crickets, crickets.
Okay, all right.
They're tired too.
I know. Thanks, everybody.
All right. Yep. You're right. Section one oh five.
Yeah, per section one oh five, it's regarding a, a human resource matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Uh, trustee Lampier.
Lampier, I.
Trustee Stetser.
I.
Trustee Keating.
Uh, I.
Trustee Lightkin.
I.
Mayor Plummer.
I.
Motion passes.
And to be clear, there's nothing else after this, right?
Um, we, no, we do need to come back.
Well, we come back and then adjourn the meeting, but are we asking?
No, we're going to come back and make a motion.
We have to do the motion.
We need you to make, um, no, I need you to make a motion after the after the executive session.
Okay.
Okay, but there, there are no other agenda items.
There are no, well, no, we've completed our agenda, but there is a matter I need you to make a motion on after the executive session in public.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
You're right. Yeah. I'm sorry, Steve.
Good night.
Oh, thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
So much.
Yeah.
Take care.
Good luck with your truck.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, boy. Yeah. Thanks, Brooklyn.
Okay.
I make a motion that we leave executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Stetser.
I.
Trustee Lightkin.
I.
Trustee Lampier.
I.
Trustee Keating.
I.
Mayor Plummer.
Or I.
Motion passes.
Okay, um, let's see. We need that first motion. Um, how do we phrase this?
I know. We have a number. What's the employee number? A, a partial number?
Yeah, yeah, just so there's something and then she can fill that in and well, we could, we could make the, the other motion.
One five three, one five three five.
Okay, um, so let's see, um.
I'll, I'll do it. I'll, I'll make a motion, um, to terminate um, employee, was it one, one, five, three? Sorry.
One, five, three, five.
One, five, three, five, um, effective immediately. Which is also during the um, was the name of this?
Probationary.
Probationary period.
All second.
Is there a second? Yes, Lily.
May I, I suggest an amendment to the, to the wording to say to terminate the employment rather than to terminate the employee.
Yes, I agree. Thank you.
Better.
Good catch. So amended? Okay, is there a second from Justin? Okay.
Roll call, trustee Lampier.
Lampier, I.
Trustee Stetser.
I.
Trustee Lightkin.
I.
Trustee Keating.
I.
Mayor Plummer.
I.
Motion passes.
Okay, the second happy motion.
Anybody? Motion, I'll make a motion to, um, now here I can say a name, right?
Yes, absolutely.
To give, uh, Brooklyn a To give Brooklyn a raise to $20. Brooklyn Thomas, a raise to $20.50 an hour effective 12, 13, 21 for a job well done.
Is there a second? Okay, roll call.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear.
Aye.
Trustee Lightkin.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Okay, minutes.
I received corrections from trustee Stetser and trustee, trustee Lightkin. I will make those amendments. I didn't see any issues with them.
No, they were all just like spelling corrections and whatnot. No, that one's I sent over.
Great. Okay, is there a motion for the first set of minutes?
I will let me find them.
I know, I've just. Oh, I can't access them on the iPad. I forgot.
It's September 28th. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for September 28th as corrected.
There's a second. I have a second.
Roll call.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear.
Aye.
Trustee Lightkin.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, what's the date of the next set?
October 12th. I make a motion to approve the minutes of October 12th.
Lanfear's second.
Were they amended?
Yes, there was some correction.
Minor amended, okay.
Okay, trustee Lightkin.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear.
Aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
I'm staying.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I wasn't there that.
Oh, okay.
I'll make a motion for, to approve the October 26th, 26th, oh my goodness, 26 minutes. I don't know if they were amended. Were there any?
I believe, I believe trustee Lightkin had some minor corrections.
Okay, as corrected or as amended.
Second please.
A second.
Okay, trustee Lightkin.
Aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to approve the November 9th minutes. I don't know if there were any corrections.
I believe there was minor. I think there was minor on all of them.
Okay. As amended.
Second.
I'll second unless that was your second, Alyssa.
Oh, no, usually it's the, I usually don't do seconds though.
Okay, I'll put in Justin. Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear.
Aye.
Trustee Lightkin.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And to finish it off, I will make a motion to approve the November 22nd minutes as amended.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay, trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Lightkin.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear.
I was absent.
Oh. We missed you too, Steve. Okay. Okay, Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes. We are officially caught up till tonight.
Oh, that's so great. That, you, you all worked so hard on that. Thank you.
Yes, I have to say thanks Susan and Lota for all of her assistance on getting these done. You know, so we are moving forward.
I have one thing before we go. I would like to apologize when the motion, when we came out of the executive session, I was not making light of the situation. The, the terminated versus termination thing, I, I laughed. It's not a laughing matter, but I just wanted to acknowledge that and, and so as to not be insensitive.
You know, it's a difficult situation. Yes.
Yeah. And it's late and we're tired. So is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to return.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Yay. Trustee Stetser.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfear.
Aye.
Trustee Lightkin.
Aye.
Trustee Keating.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Wow, thanks, everybody. It's a long night.
Everyone, have a wonderful holiday. Take care.
Take care, everybody.
Bye bye. See you. No, thank you. See you in the new year. Bye bye.